I'd like to call the meeting to order. We're now past the assembled time. I'd like to remind everyone to please check in with the attendants. And again, only authorized persons, in other words, representatives are allowed within the roped-off area. Members should have on a name tag. And probably now is a good time to remind you to please turn down your or shut off your cellphones. We have a quorum. Our checklist attendance today are Jane Fletcher and Kate Snow. And as of moments ago, we had, a quorum is 78 members, we have 115. Now, at this point, I would like to call on Prudence McKenney. Ms. McKenney has been active, engaged in community affairs for many years, and has likewise served as a dedicated town meeting representative for nearly a decade. And I would ask her to give us a brief convocation this morning.
As we gather for the first, but probably not the only representative town meeting in 2015, let's take a moment of silence to center ourselves for the tasks before us and to remember those that are no longer with us. Thank you. I'd like to commend all of you for your willingness to serve. You're preserving a longstanding Brattleboro tradition. And we are here because we care deeply about this beautiful, culturally vibrant, and quirky town that we call home. Today, may we speak with honesty, with respect, and even with brevity perhaps, as we reach decisions about the matters before us. I hope we will work together after the meeting to continue to address the town's challenges. Thank you, and enjoy the day.
Thank you, Prudence. Now, at this point, I must say with regret that the Boy Scouts were not available this year, so if we could all rise, I'll lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, the flag's on this side. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, I would call upon the town clerk to read the opening and closing paragraphs of the warning. Annette?
Good morning. The legal voters qualified to vote in representative town meeting are hereby notified and warned to meet in the multipurpose room of the Brattleboro Area Middle School on Saturday, the 21st day of March 2015, at 8:30 a.m. to act on 27 articles. And it was signed by the Brattleboro Select Board, David Gartenstein, David Scholes, Donna McAmber, Kate O'Connor, John Allen, and the school board, Jill Stahl Tyler, Stephen Truhan, David Scholes, Kimberly Price, and Todd Roach. Thank you.
I have a few announcements that we have to go through, and I'd like to start with the procedural rules for the meeting. The rules of the meeting are determined by Vermont state law, the Brattleboro Town Charter, and Robert's Rules of Order. The Town Charter provides that voting on all matters shall be by standing, or if unable to stand, by raising your hand, or by division of town meeting members, or by roll-call vote of the town meeting members. A division of town meeting members shall be held in the discretion of the moderator or upon demand of three or more of said members. When a division is called and members are to be counted, members must be clear, stand, and remain standing until you recognize and are clear that you are, have been counted. A roll-call shall be had upon the demand of six or more town meeting members. Now, on debate, no town meeting member or voter of the town shall speak more than twice on the same question without leave of the town meeting members. Town meeting members or voters of the town who have had once spoken shall not again be entitled to the floor, to the exclusion of another who has not spoken. A town meeting member may not call the question immediately after speaking on an issue. All motions and remarks should be addressed to the moderator. Finally, keeping in tradition, I would ask that you limit, or at least try to limit, your remarks to no more than two minutes. Vermont law prohibits consideration of articles that have not been warned. Now, this means that you cannot take binding action under an article, under the article "other business" at the end of the meeting, and you can't amend a warned article such that it would bring up business that hasn't been warned. Likewise, debate today needs to be confined to the merits of the question. Please raise your hand to be recognized, and when recognized, you should give your name and speak directly into the microphone. That's so that the viewers at home can hear your questions and your comments. Finally, motion should be in writing and given to the moderator. Now, this meeting is being recorded live by Brattleboro Community Television on Comcast and Southern Vermont Cables. Residents can watch the meeting on Channel 10 over the next two weeks, and can watch online streaming and on-demand at brattlebrowtv.org. Also, BCTV has a short survey available today that they would appreciate your feedback. It's the Orange Survey. This meeting is being interpreted for the deaf and hard of hearing by Elizabeth Burke and Corey Bruner. Today's refreshments and lunches are provided by members of the BUH Swiss and German Exchange Group. And they've given me here a note to pass on to you. The coffee, tea, and goodies in the lobby benefit the BUHS Swiss Exchange, now in its 36-year. The group is also selling raffle tickets for $100 gift certificates to Duo, owned by BUHS grad Steph Bonin and her husband. Tickets are only $1, or six for $5. Now, we have with us today an observer from France, Ivan Bruno. He is a French researcher and political scientist from the University of Lyon. Much like his countryman, Alex de Tocqueville, who many of you know wrote Democracy in America, Ivan is doing a study on Brattleboro this year focusing on our system of local government. He's here on a one-year sabbatical from his university. And as part of his research, he has prepared a questionnaire, which is over at the table, and which he, which you may have taken from the table on your way in. If not, he's requested that you please take one at the break. The questionnaires are anonymous. The reliability of the results depends on the number of completed questionnaires he receives, so he's asked that you please consider taking the time to fill it out. If you are uncomfortable with any question, just simply skip it over. Mr. Brunel has agreed to share his results with town meeting representatives. He had asked that, again, he has asked that you please drop the questionnaires in the box on the table labeled questionnaire before you leave. Speaking of surveys, you're going to be busy today. I also have the annual Doyle survey, which, as you know, Senator Doyle has for, I think, 45 years, asked town meeting to fill out, which has to do with issues and questions of state interests. The three Wyndham County hospitals are working together on a community health needs assessment, and there is a brief, two-page survey for them on the table for area residents to provide input into the assessment. Please take a few minutes to complete it, and it is also anonymous. Just put it in the completed questionnaire, the large envelope, or you can mail it back. Now, I'd like to take just one moment and more formally recognize two former members of this body who have passed away. As many of you know, Jesse Corum passed away on June 27, 2014. He served the town of Brattleboro in many ways, including his work on the Planning Commission from 1980 to 1985. He served as a member of this assembly for over 20 years, and was a member of the Select Board from 2008 to 2010, including Chair in 2009 and 2010. I also want to recognize Richard "Dick" Guthrie, who joined the Brattleboro Police Department in 1961, eventually becoming Chief of the Department. Among Dick's many contributions to this community, he also served as a member of this body for many years. Dick passed away on November 18 of 2014. So I would ask the Assembly to please rise in a moment of silence in memory of Jesse The Chair would now like to recognize Mr. Gartenstein for a preliminary motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the following persons be authorized to sit in the reserved section with the Select Board and school directors, that being Town Manager Peter Elwell, Assistant Town Manager Patrick Moreland, Town Attorney Robert Fisher, School Superintendent Ron Staley, and Business Administrator Frank Rucker.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please rise. You may be seated. Opposed, please rise. And the preliminary motion has been adopted, and you may finally join the meeting. Chair recognizes Ms. McCumber for a preliminary motion.
I move that the electronic media be permitted to remain in the reserved section.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please rise. Thank you. You may be seated. Any opposed? And you've approved preliminary motion number two. At this point, we will move to the business of the meeting and Article One, to see what salaries the town school district will pay its school board members. The Chair recognizes Mr. Truhan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. As in a gathering of my younger siblings and I, my sister got the brains, my brother got the beauty, something like that, and I got to be first. Article number one, I move that the legal voters of the town of Brattleboro School District authorize its Board of School Directors to pay the following amounts for the ensuing fiscal year to its school directors, the sum of $2,000 each, except that the chairman shall be paid the sum of $3,000.
Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded that the town school district authorize its Board of School Directors to pay the following amounts for the ensuing fiscal year to the school directors, the sum of $2,000 each, except that the chairperson shall be paid the sum of $3,000. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please rise. You may be seated. Those opposed, please rise. And you have adopted Article One. The Chair recognizes Ms. Price.
I move, I move that the legal voters of the town of the Brattleboro School District authorize its Board of School Directors to borrow money pending the receipt of taxes and not in excess of anticipated revenue for the school year by the issuance of its notes or orders payable not later than one year from the date thereof.
Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded that the town of Brattleboro School District authorize its Board of School Directors to borrow money pending the receipt of taxes and not in excess of anticipated revenue for the school year by the issuance of its notes or orders payable not later than one year from the date thereof. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please rise. You may be seated. All those opposed, please rise. And you have adopted Article Two. Article Three, to see if the town school district will authorize the district to accept and extend categorical grants and aid received from the State of Vermont and the United States Government. The Chair recognizes Mr. Roche.
Thank you. I move that the legal voters of the town of Brattleboro School District authorize its Board of School Directors to accept and expend categorical grants and aid received from the State of Vermont and the United States Government.
Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded that the legal voters of the town of Brattleboro School District authorize its Board of School Directors to accept and expend categorical grants and aid received from the State of Vermont and the United States Government. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please rise. You may be seated. All those opposed, please rise. And you have adopted Article Three. Article Four, to see how much money the town school district will raise and appropriate to defray expenses and liability, and liabilities. The Chair recognizes Ms. Stahl Tyler.
I move that the legal voters of the town of Brattleboro School District vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,206,756.0 as its share of salaries and expenses of the Wyndham Southeast Supervisor Union, the sum of $221,288.0 as its share of bonded indebtedness, and $11,974,134.0 for current and other expenses for the support of the schools within the district, making in all the sum of $15,402,178.0. If adopted, the portion of this total sum to be raised by taxes, to be only that portion not received from revenues from other sources, and that interest at the rate of 1% per month be charged on overdue taxes from the due date of payment of town tax, school tax, installment portion thereof, and the town and town school district taxes assessed on the grand list as of April 1, 2015, shall be due and payable in four equal installments payable to the town treasurer until overdue, then the collector of taxes, and that such payment of installments shall be made on or before 5 o'clock on the afternoons of August 17, November 16, 2015, and February 16 and May 16, 2016.
Is there a second? Second. It has been moved and seconded, as just read by Ms. Stahl Tyler, and I will spare you rereading the whole thing so that we can immediately get into the discussion.
I did have something to say, if I may.
Okay, unless there is any objection. The Chair will recognize Ms. Stahl Tyler.
So many of you were at our informational night on Wednesday. Some similar comments for you. Wanted to start to remind you all that we do, as a school board, always look at the budget and explain a bit of the process that we go through throughout the year. We started out by asking our administrators to come in with a budget that is level-funded, no higher than last year. The very idea of a level-funded budget means that some cuts will almost surely have to be made because a lot of the items in the budget go up annually. Things like teachers' negotiated rates of salary as they gain more experience, the cost of supplies, and health insurance. Health insurance rates alone for this year's budget are up by 4.5%, which is actually a lot better than a couple of years ago in 2013 when rates were up by 10%. The administrators came back with us and said, "Are you sure that's what you want? Is it level service, level-funded, zero taxes?" And we said, "No, please, not level serviced. We wanted a level-funded budget to try to minimize any tax impact to this community." That said, we noted that our annual, or our increase would be zero. That would be our ideal. Of course, we also said to them, "We want to hear from them, because they are the professionals as to what they think they may need." Still, we stress that we are listening to what this community keeps saying, and that 0% increase in taxes was our goal. The administrators actually exceeded our request, and they came back with a budget that's lower than the previous year's budget, and that is what you see in your budget packets. Plus, it still delivers the programs that the parents and the students here in this town have come to expect. Things like vocal and instrumental music, things like arts, foreign languages, and after-school programs. We were happy. A few weeks later, we did discuss with Frank, our business director, the reserve fund. And he pointed out that the reserve funds can be spent very quickly with unexpected expenses. And for example, in the month of February alone, we spent $25,000 in removing snow off the roofs and campuses. We budget for removing it from the roads, but we don't always have to remove it from the roofs. So Frank here strongly recommended that we not spend down the reserve. We had a lively discussion about that, which is probably very similar to what you have with all of your families when one person might want to spend a little bit more and another one might want to put some more in the bank. In the end, we, as a board, decided to listen to Frank's rather strong suggestion, and we did not take from the reserve in order to help adjust the tax rate downward. Now, back to the overall budget. We were still able to maintain a decrease of 0.36%. That's about a third of 1%. Yeah, that's not a lot of money, but it is $55,000 or so. It's a decrease in the budget for our schools. Of course, there's one last part to this budget process, and before we wore ourselves out patting ourselves on the back, Frank walked us through all the data of how the state calculates our total school tax rate. And he can do that again today for anyone who would desire. You'll soon see that all of those numbers are out of our control at the local level, completely out of our control. And the result of that is a 2.6 increase overall in taxes. This does come out to $44 of an increase on taxes on a $100,000 house for a family with no income sensitivity. Now, I speak for all of us when I say that we thought this was not too bad, but we did go back and look again at the total budget. What would it take, we asked ourselves, to get to a 0% increase in taxes for the town taxpayers? We didn't like the answer, and I don't think that you would either. It would require massive cuts to programs, several areas of programs, as a matter of fact. The only way to find that much money would be to cut, and to cut pretty dramatically, into programs and services that administrators know make a difference in how well our students learn. The administrators know, they've shown it to the board, we've shown it in the community forums as well, and the parents and the kids show it in their results of the surveys and their results in their testing. And after all, the reason that we have schools is to educate the kids. One more area that I'd like to bring to everyone's attention again, because what I wrote in the town report, it seems to be directly contradicted by the data. And I said that we're seeing an increase in student numbers. I'd like to explain where that number really comes from. Overall enrollment has declined in Brattleboro, along with the rest of the state. In 2013, kindergarten to grade six enrollment stood at 756; this year, it's 724. By the way, that number fluctuates pretty much every day, but those numbers are a set point in time, so they can look at them from year to year. But the equalized student count went from 789 in 2013 to 821 in 2016. What is going on? Well, equalized student number is a term defined by the state legislator. It adjusts actual enrollment to reflect pre-K students and students in poverty and English-language learners. The idea is to have a number that more adequately reflects the true needs of all our students. The other day, my sophomore high school son accused me of being naive, and he said that I believe that Brattleboro is a happy little town with no problems. And while I suppose we could all have a conversation about optimism and realities and which approach is best while raising children, all of us know that there are challenges in this town. Our town schools now stand at 61% for free and reduced lunch at Academy, 57% at Oat Grove, and 70, 7-0, percent at Green Street. An incredibly sad number that we're now also tracking is how many kids in our elementary school are homeless, and that was 15 at last count, which is down from one month earlier, which was 17, which was in some of the data we presented the other night. That number also varies. Our early education services personnel inform us that a high percentage of challenges are there dealing with poverty, homelessness, and related family issues. In the material that Deb Gass presented for MEES, I think it's the younger groups, the 0- to 3-H kids, 69% of the parents do not have a high school diploma. Now, lest we all sink into complete gloom and doom, there are good things to report, which we did report the other night. And we continue to watch all of our kids' reading levels increase and to have more kids proficient or proficient with distinction in math and in reading. And we're chipping away at those differences between the cohort groups of those on free and reduced lunch and those who are not. Best of all, to me as a mother, and surely to all of us as town representatives, we have not achieved those cohort differences going down by pulling everybody down, but rather by raising everybody's scores up. This doesn't happen everywhere. I believe, this whole board believes, that we do a great job at educating our kids here in this town, and I think I likely bore people, particularly my own husband perhaps, with my enthusiasm for the good things that I see coming out of the EES program in our elementary schools. Our tax money is being invested well. As a Chair, I speak for all of us on the board in saying that we feel this budget is fair and good for our town, and that the budget we presented deserves your support today as we vote. Now, I could draw your attention to a few numbers in this Now, I could draw your attention to a few numbers in this budget and then open back for discussion. In your packet on page one-thirty-five, you'll see that teacher and teacher salaries are up about one-point-seven percent is all. And on one-thirty-six, it's on the bottom of page one-thirty-five in case I've already had it open. And then if you look on page one-thirty-six, on the top of the page, you can see that it looks like paraprofessionals are up by fifteen percent. But if you go to page one-forty-three, you'll actually see that that number is down. It's one-forty-three, the special education number towards the bottom of the page, and that number is down by about twelve percent. So the two of those balance out. That's a reflection of actually categorizing where people spend their time better so that the budgets have better accurate reflection. And on page one-forty-three as well, the education services number for special education under the assessment is down by four hundred and seven thousand dollars. And that is a result of many factors, but one really important factor is the special intervention programs that we have in place to manage to try to keep people out of a special education program by putting them in programs that have actual effects from very early age. So the overall reduction is a third of one percent, fifty-five thousand, seven hundred ninety-eight dollars. And we still have quality programming for our kids with some really great results. And I hope all of you have seen those presentations. If you weren't able to be there on Wednesday, it is on the BCTV filming, and it'll be up on our website. And also, we've done some community forums where you can hear more about some of the specific programs that have been done, if you're interested, and some of the specific results. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Is there further discussion? Yes, sir. Please go to the mic and state your name, please.
Rusty Sage, District One. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you to the school board. Year after year, I've watched the representative town meeting, and just about every year, the school budget goes through and passes almost immediately, very little discussion on it. And then, following that, the town budget comes up, and different services are trimmed or not accepted, or personnel cuts are brought up, many different reasons for not doing so, but cutting money. And I'm not the one to talk about budgets in particular and numbers. I'm horrible with numbers. And I am a parent. I do have a son at BAMs, and his education is second only to his safety to me, so please don't take this wrong. But I would like to see more discussion from the body in regards to the school budget, in particular, what will get cut if cuts are made. You mentioned forty-something dollars in cuts. I forget the numbers. Like I said, I'm horrible with numbers. But I'd like to know more about where those cuts would come from within the school and what we can do to lower this cost even more while we're trying to trim town services and repairs to roads and town buildings. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Davis.
Andy Davis, District Three. Thank you. This is just a clarification. Jill, you mentioned the salary number on the bottom of one-thirty-five, which is a small increase, one-point-seven. I think that's small. On page one-thirty-seven, this is just a clarification, there's an itinerant section right in the middle, and it also includes salaries of a pretty big number. It's about forty percent looking about what the salary is at the bottom of one-thirty-five. And that section has salary four hundred thousand dollars, and that section went down two percent. Can you all clarify, maybe the financial guru up there, how the itinerant, who's in the itinerant category and how that line out? Because it seems like we're talking salary and salary, but they're not coalesced into one number. So what's the total percentage effect of mixing those, and can they be mixed, and who's in the itinerant and who's not? Thank you.
A member, Mr. Staley.
Excuse me. So those staff members are art, music, physical education teachers. And that section reduction is a reflection of changing staff through retirements and attrition. So that smaller pool of staff members, it just works out that, based on their salaries, anticipated salaries for the next year, they're down a little bit because of retirements or people changing positions. So when you look at the overall, again, the teaching salary is a larger pool of teachers at one-point-seven percent increase, and this is a smaller group that has a small decrease of fourteen thousand. So it's not going to affect that overall increase by much. You know, it might be one-point-six percent, one-point-seven percent, one-point-five, something like that. But we were pleased that with the overall teacher's contract that is generally between a two and a two-and-a-half percent increase, that, you know, the teacher salaries were pretty well contained.
Further discussion? Mr. Bosworth.
Yeah, Michael Bosworth, District One. I commend you on the restraint shown in the budget, and I've already determined I'm going to vote for it. But there was one number that sort of popped out at me, and I'd just like an explanation of, because I think things would have been even better if it were a different number. And talking about page one-thirty-three, the offsetting revenues after seeming to be pretty stable for three years suddenly took a decline of like seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is like twenty-two percent. So, A, I'd like to know, you know, what's the reason behind that? And B, is that just a blip or anomaly, or is that like the new reality that the schools will have to deal with going forward? Thank you.
A member of the school board is interrogated.
Yes, thank you. On page one-thirty-two, and when you look at those revenue sources, this budget responds to Act one-fifty-three and Act one-fifty-six that the legislature passed, which asks school districts or requires school districts to centralize special education services at the supervisor reunion level, under the assumption that that will create a greater efficiency and ability to respond to student needs in a cohesive fashion. So that accounts for two hundred thousand dollar reduction in revenue. In the middle of that page, you see under federal special ed, the current budget, two hundred thousand, the proposed budget down to, you know, down two hundred thousand, it's at zero. Those funds are being retained at the SU level to offset expenses at the SU level. The other significant change that Jill had referred to is the next line down, the fund balance. In years past, you see that there's been approximately a half a million dollars used in fund balance resources to offset tax liability. Again, this year, we've proposed no use of fund balance. And the delineation of, well, eventually, if you refund a half a million dollars of fund balance every year, you're going to run out of fund balance. And that's identified at the bottom of the page, where you see that we began the fiscal year fourteen with one-point-one million in fund balance. We gave back a planned amount of approximately four hundred thousand. We have planned for fiscal year fifteen. You see in that budget on page one-thirty-two, the fifteen-year, the negative five hundred thousand, that's what's intended to go back this year. And that's where we end up with a remaining balance of three hundred and eighty-eight thousand. So we thought, given the variability in the funding formula and some of the impact that we cannot control on the tax rate, that it would be wise to retain the fund balance of three hundred ninety-eight thousand for those contingencies, and we can speak about those if you're interested.
Further discussion? Mr. Agave.
I'm sorry that I missed Wednesday's informational meeting. I had an obligation on the Development Review Board that night. I am concerned, I'd like to stay with for a moment, the fund reserve. It shows that half a million dollars is being used this year, and I think we all understand, and most of us understand, that means we start next year a half a million dollars in the hole. But next year, unless we increase our reserves again, we don't have, we only have four hundred thousand dollars in reserves to make that up, if we used all of it. That would leave us with no reserves. So perhaps I'm missing something here, but it sure looks like the school board is skating on incredibly thin ice. I also ask, and this is another, I'm starting to question this notion of maintaining level-funded I'm starting to think that this is something that we're leaving out of how we think about that, because we know every year inflation is increasing and prices are going up. It's not a lot right now, fortunately, but it's one percent, one and a half, two percent a year. So of course, as we continue with this notion of never increasing the budget, we are always faced with deficits in reducing something. There's always efficiencies perhaps can make up, but there's going to be a limit to that. So the first question is on the reserves, and there really isn't a question to answer right now on the latter.
Further discussion on Article Four. Ms. Melton.
Paula Melton, District One. I just wanted to go back to the first comment, which Rusty Sage made. I felt like there was a question in there that didn't get answered. And so I would like to ask that question, which is, what scenarios did you look at to keep the tax rate at zero? And, you know, how much detail you think is appropriate, but I guess I'm not satisfied with, we looked at scenarios and you wouldn't like it.
A member of the administration, Mr. Rucker.
So we did look at a number of line items, all of the line items in this budget. And looking ahead to the future, we do expect to see in the utility area, a reduction in the oil, fuel, and electricity. There's been initiatives underway that this body has approved this year. In the academy school, we're switching from an oil-fired plant, heating plant, to wood pellet. We expect that to result in a significantly lower fuel cost. We didn't build it into the sixteen budget because the project's not completed. We didn't want to take chances on that. In the utility electrical bill, we are, the board has initiated a net metering agreement, and we expect to get the benefit of cost savings associated with that, where we're getting credits through the utility from a photovoltaic array that has been built and is just coming online. As you know, the utility budget is not a significant part of the overall expenses, fifteen million. The more significant area, of course, is our staffing. And this is a topic that everyone in all boards and communities are struggling with in Vermont, and we discussed this at some length on Wednesday, so I'll just highlight what we're doing in that area. And that is, unfortunately, the state funding formula changes to enrollment much quicker than a school board in a school system can do. And that's what's created this mismatch between spending, the ability to provide the programs that Jill has described, and as you see in the annual report that's over there, the remarkable results that we get for the investment that you have made in our schools, given the level of poverty. But the point is, just in a nutshell, if we use an example of, for example, you know, the academy school, when they were four hundred and twenty students not too long ago, and they operate grades one through six and the kindergarten, so that's seven grades. If you divide four-twenty by seven grades, that's an easy calculation, right? It's sixty kids per grade level. And we know we're not going to have one teacher in front of sixty kids. If we divided sixty kids by two teachers, that's unreasonable as well. Thirty kids per teacher would not be reasonable. So we divide that by three. That sixty divided by three teachers, whether it's a sixth-grade class, a fifth-grade class, is twenty students per grade level per teacher. Here's the problem, is as the funding formula hits us every December, a change of just ten students in enrollment that Jill had referred to, equalized students, has an impact of approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the funding formula. It has virtually no impact, as you can imagine, in what we actually spend, right? So we know that if we have four hundred and twenty students and we lose, let's say, twenty students from one year to the next, we do that same math, and you come out with four hundred divided by seven is fifty-seven instead of sixty, okay? And you divide that by three teachers, again, you're down to nineteen students on average. So that's going to have no effect on what we need to spend. But when you go to the funding formula, and we can get into that detail if you like, you will see the cost-per-student calculation has an immediate effect in that budget year, and that has an equivalent effect of one penny or ten dollars per hundred thousand dollars of tax assessment. And that's why, speaking to Spoon's comment around reserve, why it's so important that we do have the resources to stabilize that sort of impact. And of course, we have to adapt to the circumstances. We do have to respond. But another example, just one last on this, and then we'll see if I've addressed the question, but that is, if we lost a hundred students at Academy, so you go from four hundred and twenty to three hundred and twenty. Again, doing the math, three-twenty divided by seven grades is forty-six students per grade level. We're still going to probably want three teachers, because forty-six divided by three is about, is fifteen. So the point is, is that enrollment changes don't translate into the state board saying, the State Board of Education saying, "Oh, you no longer have to provide social studies," or "You no longer have to address, you know, instruction in the humanities." We, of course, still have to address all of the curricular requirements that the State Board of Ed says we will, science, math, literacy, special education, and all of the support services. So there's the challenge and the disconnect between what you see in terms of spending, fifteen million this year, a similar number in the prior year, and the board's ability to restructure our staff and essentially respond to that environment. And I'm not saying that we can't do anything. We do do a lot every year. You see- You see, as Jill noted in her remarks, special education service line is down 400,000. It has a lot to do with the interventions that we've invested in, but it also has to do with the individual student needs. And each year, we look at those needs and we make adjustments. That particular change, there is an anomaly there in that we have a high-needs program, student enrollment, that is leaving Brattleboro Town and going to the BUHS Middle School, which accounts for most of that large reduction. So, as far as answering the question, what are future expense cuts? I do see where we can control costs such as utility, this board and community has made a very significant investment in energy savings, and it looks like they are paying off. You will see, as you go through the line items of this budget, many cuts in discretionary line items in supplies, equipment, and so on. But where there has been a deficiency in spending, you do see the increase, such as in Green Street Technology, that we know needs to be improved. So, there it is.
May I follow up?
If you have a follow up.
Yes. So, I feel like that was a great answer to a question I didn't ask. And thank you, because I think it's a really important explanation of why the cost per student can go up without, you know, the taxes going down. Well, when the student numbers are going down, the cost per student goes up. So, that makes total sense. What I'm asking is, that I heard Jill say, "We looked at other scenarios and they were ugly." I want to hear the ugly. Like, what did you look at? And I think it would be helpful for people to hear, say, "I'm going to vote for this budget. I'm totally fine with paying 44 extra dollars a year." I want to hear what the ugly looks like.
Mr. Scholes.
Okay, so, yeah. Part of, I had an interesting conversation just yesterday with someone trying to think through, you know, how, it's, what Frank says is something that we're all aware of. We're aware of when we come to town meeting. We're kind of more aware, definitely more aware all the time of this. And so, we look at it. And occasionally, Paula, we come up with, "Hey, let's do X." I won't give you the X's, because, anyway. And we try to brainstorm and think it through. The bottom line that comes back to us, that's pretty apparent, is we've hired folks who really know what they're doing. And I commented the other night, and I say it often, the more I work as a school board rep, the more impressed I am with the staff that we have hired here. Our teachers with passion, but our administrators are really, really very good at finding money, finding grants, and figuring out what interventions are going to produce the results. So, when we look at programs, we can come up with ideas, but basically, a lot of, most of the time, we throw that back and we say, "Here's an idea," and we throw it back to the administrators and say, "Where do you think?" And we've been looking at it as a board all the time, particularly in the last two years. What was the money spent and where are the results? Some of this is hard to quantify. A lot of it's hard to quantify. But there is stuff that can be quantified. And so, we look at that and we say, "What, how much money did we put into, say, an after-school program? Are we getting results out of it?" We looked, for example, one time at cutting the buses. I think the bus for the after-school program is 10,000? Does that sound right? 12. So, 12,000. Okay, so if we cut that bus, will the kids that are coming, who are the kids that are identified to need that service, will they still be able to come? And the answer was no. So, gee, there was 12,000 I was going to get rid of, but somebody brighter than me said, "Gee, not a good idea." So, I hear you. I guess what I would encourage all of you to do is to keep watching us on TV, which Dora encouraged a couple of years ago and put through a motion. And at first, I thought, "Oh, my word, now we got to sit there on TV." But it's actually a good thing. I hear from people in the community that watch it. And there are some lively discussions that we have and will be continuing to have and try to figure it out. The number this year would have been massive cuts. We could have taken away, oh, I think, foreign language, probably arts and music and after-school, and we still wouldn't have gotten to the right number. I'm not willing to go there. I don't hear that from the parents in the town, and I know that I'm seeing results when I'm in my kid's school with those after-school programs. And I watch it when Andy presents the data, when Mark and Jen are presenting. It gets what we need. It's a continual question here. What do we do with the taxpayer money? Because I get to hear the complaints, too. And I complain myself sometimes. What do we do to cut down the taxes? Where do we keep it going? Where do we meet the needs that we have to do?
Chair recognizes Mr. Scholes.
Yeah. There are also, there are more really specific things that, there are more really specific things that we talked about as well. When we get the first draft of the budget, the administrators ask us to send them questions ahead of time so that they can prepare responses. And some of the questions that came up this year were, "Do we need to buy, do we need to get, do we need to buy more computers? Do the staff need new computers every three years? Do the, how many more do we need for the students?" And we get a response that the way that school education has changed, there's way more data, there's way more that's done on computers, and that those devices really are important, not just for the students, but for the staff as well. And the staff computers go down after the third year, they go down to the, down, they go over to the students, and they get used until they burn out, until they're no longer useful. So, for spending money on computers, we ask, "Well, do we need all these books?" And well, yeah, if you have school, it's good to have books. We talked about desks and chairs and carpets. We talk about, can we get closer to the actual spending on our fuel costs, particularly since we're going to be getting a discounted electric rate, because we were buying, we were the first municipality to invest in taking the energy from a solar array. We're going to get, Frank found a remarkable contract for fuel for next year, which it's $1.97 a gallon, that the town and the school district are going to benefit from. We look at those things, but you still, you don't go to exactly what you think you're going to spend and then have a winner like this. We looked at professional development. We looked at travel. We looked at the cost of testing. Last year, we looked at, we said, "Does every building need a nurse?" There are different sized buildings, and they all need a nurse. Well, when we find out what the nurses do all day, there's just no question, yeah, they do. Do we need a librarian in every building? You find out what the librarians actually do in the course of their day, and yeah, you do need that person. We do need that position. And I think what I'd like to do is kind of, this is, we're talking about these things because they cost money. And what I'd like to have, turn, look at page 132, I believe, 130 and 131. And these are, these are the staff members, these are all the people that are employed in our schools, not counting the supervisory union personnel. They're, well, actually, there are some of them, and they're funded, are in there. These are a lot of people. And the reason that we need all those people, whether our student numbers go up or down or not, is because every year, we get more students who are coming from an impoverished background. Those kids have needs, those kids have deficits when they come in that require more adults to get them up to what we call grade level, but what you would call being able to read and write and balance their checkbooks, even though they don't ever, they will never have a checkbook. But those are the things that they need to be able to do. And if we're going to get them there and include the social curriculum that I hope that somebody will speak to, because it's really an outstanding part of the things that go on in our schools, and also the incredible musicians that you get to hear when they do the content, and please go Tuesday night and hear the band concert. All of those programs, those are things that this community wants for the kids. And they cost money, and because of the level of poverty, those kids cost more and they require more adults. And what we need to be talking about is how all of the efforts of all the organizations and agencies and nonprofits and anybody else that's interested can be coordinated to help reduce the effects of poverty and not, how do we, you know, are we spending too much on books? Which I know wasn't your question, but anyway. Poverty is what's driving these costs. It has nothing to do with numbers of kids.
Mr. Phillips.
Steve Phillips, District 3. I'm glad we're having a little more discussion than sometimes we do. I suspect that one of the reasons we sometimes don't have much discussion is because we have a high degree of confidence in Mr. Staley, years past Mr. Kane. And I have to say that I am terribly impressed with this group right now and the presentation that's been made. I think it's responsible. I think there's a human face on it. And so, I congratulate you. The lack of an answer to the question, "What is your backup plan?" Well, let me rephrase that. Is it fair to say you don't have a backup plan for what if this body cuts 2.6%? I think that's the answer, is that you don't have one, because you don't want that to happen. So, if the answer is, "We don't really have a detailed backup plan to give you," I guess it would be nice to hear that.
Mr. Staley.
Thank you for those comments. As I think about this overall budget, I think about the programs that we have in this district, as well as throughout the supervisory union. And if, let's say, 650,000 was cut, or cut, much like a few years ago when somebody recommended a million dollars of cuts, we're looking at staffing. As I go through this budget, there are some areas, I'm just going to go through some programs and just identify the page, 135, bottom of the page, under transportation. Crossing guards, we spend $80,000 on crossing guards. We need those. The streets in Brattleboro, just the nature of the streets, it's, you know, it's not safe to have your kids walking through intersections in certain areas. Could we reduce that? I guess. I wouldn't want to be thinking about that. There's some other areas in that area, after-school, transportation, literacy camp, transportation that Jill mentioned. If you skip over to page 136, foreign language, Asian studies, this district has been in the forefront of educating elementary students in foreign language. The result of that is, when our kids get to the middle school, they're way beyond a typical middle schooler in foreign language. Then they go to the high school. The last two years of foreign language at the high school, our kids are getting college credit through SIT, and, well, first through the community college system. And then the second year, it's beyond what community college can provide, so they get it through SIT. We are so fortunate that our kids are graduating high school with 15 to 30 credits in college credit. The dual-credit program is amazing. It can't happen unless you have a good, strong foundation at the elementary levels. So, you know, $154,000 for foreign language, you know, those are the areas that I'd be saying, you know, "Okay, so this is the fluff." I don't believe that. But as we look at class sizes, we're still looking at 16 to 18 kids in each section of class. So, it's not like we can do much there. Skip over to 137, itinerant teachers that Andy asked about. So, music, art, physical education, could we cut back on those? There are state standards, but, you know, I know we, as a community, we value the arts. And again, this is an area of great pride for this community. The level of involvement with the arts, so could we reduce that? I mean, that's what some schools have to do when they get through all of the reductions that are forced, and I would hate to see us start looking at that. Bottom of 137, over to 138, the gifted and talented program. That's another program that's been initiated many years ago to, for enrichment activities for our students, to make sure that, you know, we've talked a lot about poverty, we've talked a lot about early intervention, but we, on the other end, there are kids that are exceeding their grade level expectations. And this program is really installed to make sure that these kids get really what they need. And it's been a great program. Program improvement on page 138, things like the environmental programs, the four wins, you know, other professional development activities in that category, that would be tough to eliminate. Oh, and then you get over to page 141, building maintenance, you know, these schools need maintenance. They need supplies. So, we try to trim that back as much as we can, but we know there are needs with the facilities. And then the computer equipment, we try to be reasonable, but, you know, we did recognize that some schools are falling behind on page 143 with computer equipment. So, even if that occurred, where we were looking at those programs, we'd still be looking at classroom teachers. And we'd have a whole different school system if that were the case. So, it's not like, we don't think, we think about these things, we don't have a backup plan, because, you know, if, we go back to work if needed.
Is there further discussion? Mr. Mima.
Ralph Mima, District 3. First, I'd like to just commend the school board for the time that you put into this and the sacrifices you make, because this is extraordinary work and extremely valuable for the community. I have three kids in the local public schools, one at Green Street and two at BUHS. And they benefit enormously. And I'd like to say that, in reference to the growing issue of poverty and the sort of expanding role that the schools have to play relative to this, just in my own experience, because I have three kids who bring friends home and are constantly in and out and involved in different kinds of activities, the world of the schools really intersects an enormous amount with our family life. And we meet lots of kids from different families, different backgrounds, and so forth. And I just want to say that I think that in addition to just providing necessary education and providing necessary services, that at sort of a higher level, what the schools are doing in Brattleboro for a lot of kids is bringing them every day into a model of an orderly society with civilized norms of courtesy and accountability and responsibility that they don't necessarily experience when they leave the school. So, I don't want to pass judgment or say any more than that, but I think that what the schools do in terms of demonstrating an orderly society that they can be part of as adults is incredibly important. I have one specific question here about the budget. If we go to page, what was it now? Page, I think it might be 142. It has to do with school improvement and curriculum development. Yeah, page 144. When I first looked at this budget, I saw that there was a total approximately $140,000 reduction in expenditures for school improvement and curriculum development, going from the 2014-2015 fiscal year to 2015-2016. And I thought to myself, you know, I just wondered what that meant, and I wondered if we were being penny-wise and pound-foolish, because $140,000 is sort of roughly, sort of in the order of magnitude of 1% of the budget, and it's roughly equivalent to what one highly qualified professional, including benefits and fees, would cost for a year. But then I also noticed that if you look at the previous fiscal year, 2013-2014, there's a lower level, and it looks like a sort of a blip during the last fiscal year of an increase in both curriculum development, school improvement, and school improvement services. And that for the proposed budget, that these expenditure levels are dropping back down to, closer to what was historically the case. I just wondered if the school board could respond to my question of whether, you know, what this $140,000 reduction in expenditures means, and I guess speak to whether we are being penny-wise and pound-foolish in terms of the long-term need to maintain an adequate level of curriculum development and improvement. Thanks.
Mr. Staley.
So, on that page, that's reflective of the federal grant program that last year, the year before, that sequestration that caused all of the schools to lose federal money in Title I and Title II-A. So, school improvement would be the remediation programming and also the professional development. So, all of our schools, because of
So all of our schools, because of the reduction of the federal grants program, suffered there, and then, as you see, it's back up, they kind of released that, those funds, the next year, and so it's back up a little bit beyond what last year was. But that's kind of out of our control, and so what you do is try to make it up with local services. And again, understanding the balance between we can't raise this budget to equal that offset. So that's a challenge.
Further discussion. Ms. Davidson.
A little vertically challenged here. Again, like everybody, or many people speaking here today, I appreciate the hard work of the whole school system and the School Board particularly, because you put in so many volunteer hours, and I appreciate the conversation and the questions, and the respectful way in which people have phrased those questions. In the interest of vetting each part of the budget, I wonder if you could talk about the need for paraprofessionals in the school system, because that's a very high salary item, and you can't reduce teachers, you could always reduce pairs, and yet we do have issues of poverty and many issues with children with behavioral issues or whatever. So, but I would just like an explanation of the need for pairs since it is a high item, and I think it would be helpful for everybody to hear that. Thank you.
The School Board is interrogated.
So, actually, I'd kind of like to ask one of the principals to answer that. I think Andy Petulini could probably speak to that more eloquently.
Is Mr. Petulini available to respond? Mr. Petulini.
I'm not sure about eloquent, but pairs in a school provide a wide range of functions. Most of the work they do is directly related to students and support in the classroom. So, is the number of students enter the school, the percentage of students enter the school who come from impoverished backgrounds, generally speaking, that relates to an increase in need. And it starts, as soon as they enter in kindergarten, with behavior. So a lot of our students commit, about 50%, a little higher perhaps, year to year, of our students who come in in kindergarten are not ready to learn, and that's typical, roughly 50% throughout the state. A lot of our students today aren't ready to sit in a classroom, they're not ready to interact in appropriate ways with other students. Term a couple of years ago for, that was coined, was called the explosive child. The term today is to traumatize child. So we have a significant number of kids who come in who act in inappropriate ways because of trauma in their life. So one of the functions that we do with pairs is that we have to, we have to teach children these social skills. We have to address their social and emotional development, as well as their academic and physical. So pairs play a vital role in that. So for a classroom teacher at Academy, we average 18 students per class. If there are three or four students in a classroom, in a kindergarten classroom, for example, who, when they get frustrated, or they get upset, they, if they react physically, kick over a chair, hit a student, that's not acceptable. But we have to, but what we do is we actually work with those children, and we teach them acceptable ways to respond. We eliminate that behavior, we give them a new behavior that's acceptable, that's appropriate, and that will help them develop and thrive, so they can stay in a classroom. That's intensive work. It takes professionals, it takes a lot of support, and also it takes paraprofessionals, because a teacher can't do that while she's got 17 or 18 other students in a classroom. That's one way. Then there are other ways, just lunchroom, or, we don't have a lunchroom at Academy, we have 21 lunchrooms, we have 21 classrooms, but just the act of getting the food to the classrooms, for example, is liberate, intensive. We have kids on IEPs and specialized needs who have to get support in various ways, some of it's academic, for example, and they would need a para. So there are a lot of uses for para support, and that's a couple. And in this budget, we did decrease, we eliminated one para position at Academy School. I hope I answered your question.
Further discussion on the motion. Senator Ballant.
Becca Ballant, District 2. I just wanted to have folks turn to page 134, I just needed a little clarification. Looking at the FY 2014 school-level data, we're looking at student-teacher ratio at Academy School, and it says 10.39, and I know Principal Petulini just said it was 18 per class. I'm assuming that is because academic support teachers are included in that ratio, is that correct?
It's not only the academic support teachers, but special ed teachers and other staffing. So any professional staff, including librarians, counselors, art, music, that's the overall student-to-teacher ratio. The classroom ratio is, I think, 18 at Academy, but then when you add all of those other professionals, it gets to that number.
And I'm wondering, given the level of poverty at Green Street in particular, where my son is, so it's 70% free and reduced lunch, I'm wondering how the student-teacher ratio compares at that school compared to the others, because it's not listed here.
Yeah. So there is a handout, I think, over there somewhere, but, so as I mentioned, Academy is 17.9, Green Street's 15.9, and Oak Grove is 17.6. So they're, you know.
And I just want to take this opportunity to say that Mark Spino is doing an incredible job at Green Street, and I'm so glad he's there.
Further discussion. Mr. Wilmending.
John Wilmending, Second District. A quick clarifying question. We heard evidence, at least by federal standards, that our level of poverty in our schools is mounting, judging by the free and reduced-price school lunch eligibility figures. And most of us know, who have been around for a while, that in the 1990s, the Vermont Supreme Court ruled that students in Vermont must have adequate and equitable access to public education resources, and as a result, revenues for public education are shared among the towns and counties in Vermont. My question is, just a brief clarification, can you tell us if Brattleboro taxpayers are net payers or net recipients of the revenue sharing of the statewide system?
School Board is interrogated. Mr. Staley or Mr. Rucker?
Sure. Let me, yeah. Okay. Yeah, so that was, you know, a very contentious topic, particularly in the ski towns when Act 60 came into existence. Your Select Board and your town treasurer gets a document from the Agency of Education each year that would answer your question. So I'm looking at that document, and this gets a little afar of my scope of work, but I have a general understanding of how it works, so I think I can answer your question. So we have a, 1% of our grand list in Brattleboro is approximately 11 million, and when we look at how that breaks down by homestead tax rate payers and our non-residential state taxpayers, this indicates that we raise approximately 14 million in tax revenue for education, but that is short of the total when we also combine the UHS, Brattleboro UHS. So we draw an additional, it looks like about 4.5 million from the education fund. So the answer to your question is that we raise maybe 2/3 of what we spend locally, and we get assistance from the rest of the education fund for the balance.
Further discussion or debate? Mr. Sage.
I just wanted to go back to one thing you had mentioned earlier with the cost cuts, and I'll explain why. You had mentioned, you looked at cutting the school buses for the after-school programs, and that was $12,000, I believe you said. When my son stays after for the BEAMS program, he's there until 5:15, and then he gets on the bus sometimes and heads home, or if I'm out, I pick him up. If he stays after for academic help, he gets done at 4 o'clock, and he doesn't have access to the bus. Now, the BEAMS program, while they're great for his social life, are not always what I would consider an academic program. And I know some of the programs, I'm sure you guys are aware of some of the programs that they have that may not meet academic needs, but they're there, they're great for the kids to socialize, so be it. Myself, I would be willing to cut $12,000 out of the budget and pick my son up from these social programs when he's not getting this bus ride home when he's getting academic help.
So first of all, you know the BEAMS program would be at BAM's, and we aren't part of BAM's budget up here. Okay. So, but the bus doesn't run every single day after school, and it was, we questioned the administration, it was specifically set up to go for the group that most needed it, and it's the academic programs. There, I don't, I wouldn't really say there's a BEAMS equivalent at Academy and Oak Grove and Green Street. There are drama programs, I guess in some ways you might say that, but the majority of the after-school programs are tutoring programs with some drama, music, am I forgetting anything, guys? Computers. Anyway, so it's, is that really what you wanted to know?
I'm sorry, I was using my experience as an example. My kids are past that, and they went to St. Michael's and other schools outside of Brattleboro for the elementary level. But, but yes, I'm, that's what I'm saying is, are these programs academic programs entirely, or are they programs that are social programs that, that the cost could be made that way?
They're more based on academic achievement. The BEAMS program is, as you said, some academics, but also social and other enrichment activities. We do have some enrichment activities at the Brattleboro Town Level after-school, but the primary focus of that is really remediation, after-school tutoring. And, you know, we sprinkle in some other activities to encourage the kids to be there.
The Chair recognizes, you're okay. All right, the question is, shall the legal voters of the Town and Brattleboro School District vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,206,736 as its share of salaries and expenses of the Wyndham Southeast Supervisory Union, the sum of $221,288 as its share of bonded indebtedness, and $11,974,134 for current and other expenses for the support of the schools within the district, making in all the sum of $15,402,178. If adopted, the portion of this total sum to be raised by taxes, to be only that portion not received from revenues from other sources, and that interest at a rate of 1% per annum, per month, be charged on overdue taxes from the due date of payment of town tax, school tax installment portions thereof, and that the town and town school district taxes assessed on the grand list as of April 1, 2015, shall be doable, due and payable in four equal installments, payable to the town treasurer until overdue, when the collector, and then to the collector of taxes, and that such payment of installments shall be made on or before 5:00 p.m. on the afternoons of August 17, 2015, November 16, 2015, February 16, 2016, and May 16, 2016. Are you ready for that question? If so, all those in favor kindly rise. You may be seated. All those opposed, please rise. You may be seated. The ayes have it, and you have approved Article IV. We're now going to move to Article V, and you want, you're okay. No, I, we've, we've been going only here for about an hour. Can you plug them in? We've just got to do a real quick change of some microphones, and it'll only take about two minutes. So we'll just stay at ease here for just two minutes. So if everyone would kindly take their seats. We've got the electronics back working, and we will now continue with the town portion of the meeting, and at this point, the Chair would recognize the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, David Gartenstein. Do we have the power to the, okay, here we go.
There we go. I just want to take this opportunity, to anybody who was not present at the informational meeting, to introduce the new town manager, who's been working with us since January 20th, Peter Elwell, who's directly to my right. And I also want to take this opportunity to give our warm thanks and appreciation to Patrick Morland, who served as interim town manager for, the way I counted, about 18 months from July of '13 until January of 2015, a way longer period than any of us expected, and Patrick did a thorough and supportive job throughout that process. We also want to recognize and thank Patrick Morland.
All right, we'll get into the town section of our meeting with Article V, to act on the auditor's report for the Town and Town School District, and the Chair recognizes Ms. O'Connor.
I move that the auditor's reports be accepted as printed.
Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded that the auditor's report be accepted as printed. Is there any debate? Hearing none, all those in favor kindly rise. You may be seated. All those opposed, please rise, and Article V is approved. Article VI, to see if the Town and Town School District will authorize the Select Board and school directors to employ a certified public accountant or public accountants. The Chair recognizes Mr. Gartenstein.
This was supposed to be assigned to Mr. Scholz, but he appears to be unavailable. I move that the Town and Town School District authorize its Select Board and school directors to employ a certified public accountant or public accountants.
Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded that the Town and Town School Districts authorize its Select Board and school directors to employ a certified public accountant or public accountants. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please rise. You may be seated. All those opposed, please rise, and you have adopted Article VI. All those opposed, please rise, and you have adopted Article VI. Article VII, to see if the town will ratify, approve, and confirm the select board's appointment of a town and town school district clerk for a term of one year. Chair recognizes Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the appointment of Annette Cappy as town and town school district clerk for a term of one year from March 22nd, 2015, be ratified, approved, and confirmed.
Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded that the appointment of Annette Cappy as town and town school district clerk for the term of one year from March 22nd, 2015, be ratified, approved, and confirmed. Are you ready for that question? If so, all those in favor, please rise. You may be seated. All those opposed, and you have approved Article VII. Article VIII, to see if the town will ratify, approve, and confirm the select board's appointment of a town and town school district treasurer for a term of one year. Chair recognizes Mr. Gartenstein.
Did you change your plan?
Oh, Mr. Scholz.
I move that the appointment of John O'Connor as town and town school district treasurer for a term of one year from March 22nd, 2015, be ratified, approved, and confirmed.
Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded that the appointment of John O'Connor as town and town school district treasurer for a term of one year from March 22nd, 2015, be ratified, approved, and confirmed. Is there any debate? If not, all those in favor, please rise. You may be seated, and all those opposed, please rise, and you have approved Article VIII. Article IX, to see if the town will ratify, approve, and confirm the select board appointment of a town attorney for a term of one year. The Chair recognizes Ms. McCumber.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the appointment of the firm of Fisher &amp; Fisher Law Offices, PC, as town attorney for a term of one year from March 22nd, 2015, be ratified, approved, and confirmed.
Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded that the appointment of the firm of Fisher &amp; Fisher Law Firm, Law Offices, PC, as town attorney for a term of one year from March 22nd, 2015, be ratified, approved, and confirmed. Is there any debate? If not, all those in favor, please rise. You may be seated. Any opposed, please rise, and you have approved Article IX. Article X, to elect two representatives to the Capital Grant Review Board for a term of one year from March 22nd, 2015, two members will be nominated from the floor. So, the Chair will entertain nominations or volunteers for this position, and no second is necessary. If you wish to serve on the Capital Grant Review Board, raise your hand, or if you have somebody that you would like to nominate. Mr. Herzog. Please, please would you, I, I can't hear you, George.
George Herzog, District One, I volunteer.
Okay, George Herzog, all right. Other, we need one more volunteer. Mr. Herzog graciously stepped forward. Is there anyone else who would like to take this task on? Let me just, uh, take just a moment to read from the Charter what the Capital Grant Review Board does. Article VII says, "The Capital Grant Review Board shall be established to study and evaluate all requests made on behalf of the town or its board for grants or loans for capital expenditures." Having just heard that, is there any other nominations or volunteers out there for the second position on the Capitol Review Board?
That made it much more exciting.
Mr. Wilmerding.
John Wilmerding, Second District, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. Are there further nominations? All right, hearing none, then, in that case, the Chair would call upon Ms. O'Connor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the following people be appointed to serve on the Capital Grants Review Board for a term of one year from March 22nd, 2015, George Herzog and John Wilmerding.
Is there a second? All those in favor of the motion to appoint George Herzog and John Wilmerding to the Capitol Review Board, please rise. You may be seated. Any opposed? And you have approved Article X. Article XI, to see if the town will elect or appoint members to the town finance committee for a term of one year from March 22nd, 2015, members to be nominated from the floor. Since the members are to be nominated from the floor, the Chair would, once again, entertain any nominations, any volunteers for the finance committee. No seconds are necessary. If you have any inclination to serve on the town meeting finance committee, nominations are now open. Is there any interest?
Would you read what the Charter said?
Sure. Charter specifically provides, "The representative town meeting shall establish a finance committee for the general purpose of reviewing proposed and actual expenditures by the town, town school district, and such other budgets which affect the taxpayers of the town of Brattleboro, including Brattleboro Union High School District Number Six. A review will include making recommendations to the representative town meeting and the voters. The committee will work with the town finance director, school finance director, and other town officials in assessing the recommendations and impact of the proposed annual budget and all finance policy, including fund balances, debt management, capital improvement, and capital plan. It is also recommended that the committee review all auditor's reports and any other matters of financial import that impact the voters of the town." That's by Charter, it's specifically on Page Two, for those of you who might want to reference it, of the Charter. Are there any volunteers or nominations? Ms. Melton.
Paula Melton, District One, I volunteer.
Further nominations or volunteers for the finance committee? Yes, sir.
Franz Reichman, District Two, I'll give it a shot.
So, we have Paula Melton and Franz Reichman who have volunteered. Mr. Wilmerding.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Moderator. I would be happy to continue on the finance committee if the body feels that's appropriate. I want to point out, and I did so in an open letter to most of you, that this past year I was the only person under appointment to the finance committee, and it was frustrating not having anyone to meet with and still trying to be vigilant and, and study our town finances. The previous three years, Spoon Agave ably chaired the finance committee, and we got a lot of work done. I'm maybe less inclined to meet as often as we once did. I think our reports could be more succinct, and I think that we don't need to have 30 meetings or 40 meetings in a year to, to give the body a good report.
So, we have three nominations, three volunteers. Are there further volunteers or nominations? I'm sorry? Yes, Ms. Dislook, yes.
Arlene Dislook, District Two. I think it could be a conflict for John to be on both the Capitol Review and Finance.
We've, I have reviewed, but I'll, I'll, where's Mr. Fisher? I'll turn that one over to Mr. Fisher, although I have reviewed the conflict section, and I don't believe it is, but maybe Mr. Fisher, as the town attorney, can pass on that.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I do not see any conflict there between Capital Grants Review Board and the finance committee, so long as there's no personal financial interest of Mr. Wilmerding. That would come up on a case-by-case basis, but other than that, I don't think there's a, per se, conflict of interest.
Thank you. Further nominations? Mr. What, Mr. Barber.
Orion Barber, District One. I'm sorry to disappoint you, don't get your hopes up. Been there, done that. I'm not volunteering, I'm, just need some information.
We put your name down anyway.
Can people, can people, upon mature reflection, volunteer during the year and legally serve on the committee? That's my question.
Okay. I, I think that I will toss that ball to the town attorney from, because it calls for a legal opinion. We have the, the article itself says to elect or appoint members of the town finance committee for a term of one year, and we're in the process of accepting nominations. We will then vote on each one of the nominations, and then there will be a motion placed on the floor, which will be to elect those people who received a majority vote, each one will, will vote on each nomination, and everyone that received a majority approval of this body will be included in the, uh, motion. Then, if you wished to amend that motion by suggesting that people could volunteer at some subsequent date, I don't know that that would be objectionable, but that is more of a legal question, so I'm tossing the ball to Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On Page Three of the Charter, that same section of the finance committee goes on to read, "Pursuant to the rules established by Representative Town Meeting, appointment or election of finance committee members shall be made at each annual Representative Town Meeting." Based on that, I think that it's town meeting's duty to make those either appointments or elections, and that it would not happen during the year. Of course, all of those meetings, as a subcommittee of the town, would be subject to the open records, or, sorry, open meeting law, and anybody who wished to attend those obviously can attend and give their input to that committee meeting. So, it doesn't preclude participation, but I don't think that there can be volunteers that get on to the committee other than through town meeting. Thank you.
I like that explanation better. Mr. Webster.
Don Webster, District Three, I have a question, guess for you, and is it possible for this body to authorize, authorize the moderator to make appointments as he, she feels necessary, to fill out, to make a larger committee if it's desirable? Could we, could we pass a motion authorizing you to do that?
Well, I think that's just what Mr. Fisher just addressed, Don, if I'm not mistaken. Bob?
The answer is yes, but it would have to be at the town meeting. So, not throughout the year on a sort of case-by-case basis. It has to happen at town meeting, which in years past, I believe, has happened, when nobody, when there have not been nominations, there at least have been appointments from time to time at town meeting by the end of the day that appointed your committee.
So, we will return to the question, and that is, are there further volunteers or nominees for the finance committee?
I'll take a shot at it again.
Catherine Turnus has also offered to volunteer. Are there further?
And I have another clarifying question. In the past four years, we have had people step forward from the community and been told by members of the town finance committee and the moderator that their attendance and participation in finance committee meetings is welcome, and some of them have acted in the role of finance committee members, as you may know, during that interim. Now, we have a clarification, which I think is a more incisive clarification, and I want to thank you for it, but I do want to make it clear, as I, and maybe this is an interrogation against Mr. Fisher. One does not have to be an elected member or of Representative Town Meeting to serve on this committee, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Right. So, I think we should encourage others to step forward during the year, come to our meetings, engage in discussions, the meetings are all open and public anyway. Thank you.
Further nominations?
Jackie Stromberg, District Two, I'll volunteer.
Thank you, Mrs. Stromberg. Further nominations? Well, we've got a slate of, of five. Let's, let's vote on each one individually, and all they are required to receive is a majority approval. So, all those in favor of, let's see, who did we come up with first?
Paula was first.
Oh, yeah, Paula Melton was first, okay. All those in favor of appointing Paula Melton? Oh, we got a good question, Ms. Burke.
Molly Burke, District Two, just a clarifying question. So, if we have five candidates, we're only voting for two.
No, 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 this, this, we're voting for, we can vote as, for as many, the finance committee has no limit.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
But you can still volunteer.
We thought maybe you wanted to add your name.
I'll put you on the list.
Okay, so, the first nominee was Paula Melton. All those in favor of Ms. Melton, kindly rise. You may be seated. All those opposed? And, yes.
We made a motion?
No, we make it, I got it, I got it, and then, once we have all the nominations, we put them in.
I'm sorry, we're confused. Work, work is.
Okay.
You need to write them down. Yeah, I've got that.
Okay, so Paula Melton is number one. Number two, Franz Reichman. All those in favor of Franz Reichman, please rise. You may be seated. All those opposed? All those opposed?
Not opposed.
Point of order?
Point of order. I think George.
No, that was not her too.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So you have approved also overwhelmingly Mr. Reichman. The next nominee was John Wilmerding. All those in favor of Mr. Wilmerding, please rise. You may be seated. All those opposed? And Mr. Wilmerding has also been duly nominated. The next, next was Ms. Jackie Stromberg. All those in favor of Ms. Stromberg, please rise. You may be seated. All opposed? And she also has been duly nominated. The next was Catherine Turnus. All those in favor of Ms. Turnus, please rise. You may be seated. And all those opposed to Ms. Turnus? And she also has been nominated. Now, at this point, having five nominees, I will call upon Mr. Scholz for a motion.
I move, I move that the following people be appointed to serve on the Representative Town Meeting Finance Committee for a term of one year from March 22, 2015. Paula Melton, Franz Reichman, John Wilberding, Orion Barber. Shall we, by acclamation? Sorry, take that, write off the list. Catherine Turnus and Jackie Stromberg.
Is there a second? If so, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please rise. You may be seated. Any opposed? Thank you, and you've approved the Finance Committee for the next fiscal year. Now we move to Article 12, to elect three trustees for the Brooks Memorial Library to serve three years, and one trustee to fill an unexpired term of two years. The names for consideration for three-year term, 2015 to 2018, are Adam Franklin Lyons, Robert Stack, and Susan Troy. The name for consideration for the unexpired term, 2015 to 2017, is Deborah Lowy Rice. Is, the chair would call upon Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the following people be appointed to serve on the Board of Trustees for the Brooks Memorial Library, Adam Franklin Lyons, Robert Stack, and Susan Troy for three-year terms, 2015 to 2018, and Deborah Levy Rice for the unexpired term, 2015 to 2017. I hope I pronounced her name right.
Is there a second? Any debate?
Any here?
Is, are either of the candidates, any of the candidates present? Oh, yes, they are. In the back, one, two.
Two out of three is not bad.
Two out of three? Okay. Further, any further, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please rise. You may be seated. All those opposed, please rise. And you have approved Article 12. Article 13, to see what salaries the town will pay its officers. Chair recognizes Mr. Gardenstein.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the salaries of the Select Board be set at $3,000 each, that the salary of the chair be set at $5,000, and that the Select Board be authorized to fix the salaries of all other town officers for fiscal year 2016.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the salaries of the Select Board be set at $3,000 each, and the salary of the chairperson be set at $5,000, and that the Select Board be authorized to fix the salaries of all other town officials for the fiscal year 2016. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly rise. You may be seated. All those opposed, please rise. And you have approved Article 13. Article 14, to see if the town will authorize its Select Board to borrow money in anticipation of taxes, grants, and other revenue. Chair recognizes Ms. McCumber.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the Select Board be authorized to borrow money on its notes in anticipation of taxes, grants, and other revenue.
Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded that the Select Board be authorized to borrow money on its notes in anticipation of taxes, grants, and other revenue. Is there discussion? If not, all those in favor, please rise. You may be seated. All those opposed, please rise. And you've approved Article 14. Moving now to Article 15, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $78,000 through special assessment on properties within the Downtown Improvement District, as approved by town meeting March 19, 2005, and as delineated in the Town Ordinance entitled Municipal Act to Establish and Regulate the Downtown Improvement District, to be used for capital and operating costs of projects of the town duly designated downtown organization. Chair recognizes Ms. O'Connor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $78,000 through special assessments on properties within the Downtown Improvement District, as approved by town meeting March 19, 2015, and as delineated in the Town Ordinance entitled Municipal Act to Establish and Regulate the Downtown Improvement District, to be used for capital and operating costs of projects of the town's duly designated downtown organization. And I'd like to speak to the motion.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $78,000 through special assessments on properties. Yes, Mr.?
Has not been seconded.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Franks. Is there a second? Please watch me on that. Thank you. It's a good point of order. All right. It has been now moved and seconded that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $78,000 through special assessments on property within the Downtown Improvement District, as approved by town meeting March 19, 2005, and as delineated in the Town Ordinance entitled Municipal Act to Establish and Regulate the Downtown Improvement District, to be used for capital and operating costs of projects of the town's duly designated downtown organization. The chair recognizes Ms. O'Connor.
Thank you. I thought I would just give everybody a brief explanation of what this is, just in case you don't know. Brattleboro Downtown is called a designated downtown, and we receive that designation because of a state program that allows towns to apply for that status. And if you're chosen to be a designated downtown, you can get grants and loans and tax credits to do improvements within the downtown district. Obviously, we're talking about downtown that runs from about Park Place down to Marlborough College Grad Center, north-south, and then it has High Street, Ellie Street, Flat Street, to the Connecticut River. So it's that portion of downtown. This is not a tax on everybody. It's only a tax on the property owners in the downtown district, on their businesses. There are about eighty, or not businesses, but their buildings. There are about eighty individuals or corporations that own property downtown. This tax is on their property. It goes to the downtown organization, which is, in this case, Building Avedo Brattleboro, or also known as the Downtown Alliance. The $78,000 comes from a budget that they come, they bring before the Select Board. They have a budget and work plan that they have to do every single year. They come and ask for this amount of money. They came up with $78,000. It was approved by the Select Board, and we approved it to come to, to, to you. So if that doesn't make sense, I'm happy to take some questions, but that's sort of the Reader's Digest version of what this money is for.
Is there further debate with regard to Article 15? Mr. Fallon.
Peter Fallon, District Three. Could you tell us a little bit more about some of the results that we've, that we've seen as a result of this? This is now, what, the 10th year, or sometime back, about 2005, we, we, didn't we, and also, didn't we have to actually agree? It wasn't so much, I mean, the state probably had its own criteria too, but didn't we, as a body, have to agree in 2005 to, to join in? Thank you.
Yes, and just so you know, I'm not a representative of the Downtown Alliance or BABB, so I'm speaking as a Select Board person and as somebody who's just been involved in this. I used to be on the Board of BABB. I am, but I'm on a different, I'm an ex officio member now. What we get, or what you get, or what we all get as a town through that, again, is tax credits, loans, and grants. There's some, the Brooks House was one of the most recent recipients of, because of the state program, that we're able to apply for. There's a state sidewalk project that's going to take place, that because we're designated downtown, we get to get some of that grant or loan money for that. Some of the things that you'll notice that the downtown organization itself does with the $78,000 is the flowers that you see. Dick DeGrae and Missy Galanis spent a lot of time on the flowers. The lights that you saw up over the holidays were, were part of the $78,000. There's a program that's new, I guess it's been in existence for about two years now, that the downtown organization put in place. It's a matching grant facade program, and there's several businesses around town. I know Greg Warden's Artisan Design was one. I know Missy Galanis was another. There are a handful of them. Herman Thrush Brewery that were able to apply to the Downtown Alliance to, you know, they, their sign, new signs cost $1,000. They were able to get up to $500 from the Downtown Alliance. It came out of this money, and I think the town has been funding this now for about the last 10 years. And, you know, the process is, is that the town itself designates who will be the downtown organization. So the, Building Avedo Brattleboro Downtown Alliance came to the town and said, we want to be the designated downtown. The town's, town meeting, the Select Board said, yes, you can be it. Come to us with a budget and a work plan. And what's sort of, what's been happening for the last 10 years or so is that same process. They come to the Select Board. The Select Board says yes, then it comes on to you folks. The state requires that there be a downtown organization, and it's actually the state that allows the municipality to collect money through the special assessment. Does that answer anything? Okay.
Further debate or, or questions? Mr. Franks.
Tom Franks, District Three. First disclosure, I was the executive, I served as the executive director of Building Avedo Brattleboro when the special assessment district was implemented, so I know a little bit about it. My one, my one point, and this, I'll try not to make it sound like sour grapes, but as the executive director, I busted my back on creating a report for you people, the town meeting reps, of our budget and of how we spent the money last year, and put a report in the annual packet. And it's been a little while since I've served in that capacity, and I must say, every year I look for that in our meeting packet, and I don't see it. So I'd just like to say that, you know, I, I believe that the, you know, I understand that the, the value that having a designated downtown organization brings to this community has not been adequately stated. It is immense. There is a lot of money that can be accessed. There are all kinds of programs that help support the vitality of downtown. And that, I think we haven't even begun, begun to touch that today. But just for, as a member of this board, and it's been long enough since I thought I could raise this point, maybe not, you'll let me know later, I would like to see in the future, in the packet, a report, some justification of the budget and what's been accomplished in the last year. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Further debate or discussion? Mr. Gardenstein.
Thank you, Mr. Franks. That's a very good point. The budget is presented at the Select Board meeting and made publicly available, but we will make sure in coming years that the materials are also included in the town meeting materials.
Further discussion or debate? Mr. Phillips.
Steve Phillips, District Three. I've said this at previous town meetings, but I think it bears repeating. When the district map was created, it was an arbitrary designation because the town planner had a map. And he called me and said, what map should we use? And I said, I don't know. And he said, I think I'm going to use this one, which was a zoning map. So at prior meetings, I suggested that that be reviewed and enlarged. I heard Kate O'Connor say that the district now goes to Park Place, but it, but it didn't used to. And I think it should. I think it should be reviewed and adjusted to be more equitable and larger, so that the burden of the tax falls on what everyone looking at a downtown map would say is our downtown.
Does a member of the, all right.
I just want to clarify, I was giving you rough map.
Square footage.
Right, so it's, what I said was not specific.
So I guess my follow-up question, if it's not in, in the district, what efforts has the Select Board made to review and possibly enlarge the district?
The chair would recognize Mr. Francis in the back. Maybe you could shed some light on that.
Good morning. I'm Rod Francis, and I'm Planning Director. Thank you for the question. So in the, the designation with the state program runs for a five-year period, whereupon it's reviewed, and in the last reapplication, we reviewed the boundaries. To be clear about the Park Place boundary line, the boundary cuts behind the courthouse, effectively, from Putney Road through to roughly, I'm struggling with my street names here, I believe Chapin Street. So it actually excludes the properties with frontage on Park Place. As far as I'm aware, the property, the boundaries of the designated area have not changed since its inception. I wasn't around and don't know what the decision-making process was for establishing the boundaries as they exist. The designation expires again, I believe, in 2019, and that'll be an opportunity for us to review the boundaries at that point. We can review the boundaries at any time between applying for renewal of the designation and the planning department and planning commission will be open to being involved in such a project.
You have a follow-up to that, Mr. Phillips? Does that answer your question?
I didn't hear the year that it can next be changed.
19.
19, okay.
Yes. 2019.
I'll bring it up again in 2020.
Are there further debate or questions with regard to this issue? Mr. Wilmerding.
A brief segue from the previous question. I recall, I think it was two years ago, perhaps 2013, that we voted in this body to extend the boundaries of the Downtown Improvement District northward, because I remember one of the property owners expressing gladness that his property was going to be included in that district. And maybe someone else here remembers our doing that. But I recall, I believe that was an action of this body. And I also wanted to say something else. I sit on the Town Arts Committee, which is another fine committee reporting to the Select Board, that, that works on our, the betterment of our community. And over the years, I've found myself bewailing the fact that the latticework has a big old Band-Aid on the top of it. And it looks to me like it's part of the face of our community, the latticework, and it's our, our only art deco facade in town. And I would like to express on, in a non-binding way, that it would be great if the Downtown Improvement Coordinator could look into possible grant augmentation of the chances of, of repairing the latticework facade. And I understand from folks associated with the latticework, this, this might cost upwards of a million dollars. So grant, you know, looking for grant funds for that are appropriate.
Further discussion on Article 15? Further discussion on Article 15. Mr. Underhill.
Ben Underhill, District One. I just have a question. Is there any administrative fee that's retained by the town or the state for that $78,000?
Yes, Ms. O'Connor is interrogated.
No. Sorry, I made my banana. No, there's no administrative fee. It goes directly to the Downtown Organization.
Further debater questions? Mr. Barber.
Ryan Barber, District One. Just a friendly suggestion. As part of the report that I hope we're now going to see each year in our packet, and given the capability of the town to produce maps, there ought to be a map in there. We ought to be able to see it, and it's going to help us make suggestions about extending the boundaries, you know, in all directions, except, and even out to the middle of the river. Thanks.
Further debate on Article 15. Mr. Siegel.
Hi, I'm Siegel, District Three. I just wanted to say that I also recall, as Mr. Wilberding said, the debate, and I think a passage of extension of the district northward. I can't remember which year it was, but it was sometime in the last three, since that's the time I've been here. Also, I was afraid to get up and say this before he did, because after my last comment, I think with the absence of contention here, my mind has gone soft.
The question is, shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $78,000 through special assessments on properties within the Downtown Improvement District, as approved by Town Meeting, March 19, 2005, and as delineated in the Town Ordinance entitled Municipal Act to Establish and Regulate the Downtown Improvement District, to be used for capital and operating costs of projects of the town duly organized Downtown Organization? Are you ready for that question? If so, all those in favor, please rise. You may be seated. All those opposed, please rise, and you've approved 19. My goal would be to, let's, excuse me, not 19, 16. Let's take up 16, and after 16, we'll take a brief recess. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $223,276.48 through special assessment on property within the Mountain Home Park Special Benefit Assessment Tax District, as approved by Town Meeting, March 24, 2007, and as delineated in the Town Ordinance entitled Municipal Act to Establish and Regulate the Mountain Home Park Special Benefit Assessment Tax District, for the purpose of paying debt service on the capital improvements to the water and sewer lines serving the Mountain Home and Deepwood Mobile Home Parks. The Chair recognizes Mr. Scholes. Got to make the motion first.
I move that the town raise and appropriate $223,276.48 through special assessments on property within the Mountain Home Park Special Benefit Assessment Tax District, as approved by Town Meeting, March 24, 2007, and is delineated in the Town Ordinance entitled Municipal Act to Establish and Regulate the Mountain Home Park Special Benefit Assessment Tax District, for the purpose of paying debt service on the capital improvements to the water and sewer lines serving the Mountain Home and Deepwood Mobile Home Parks. And I would suggest people direct their inquiries, Mr. Fisher, on the background and basis of this.
Is there a second, first of all? Thank you, Mrs. Manning. The motion has been made and seconded as just read. Is there any debate? If not, all those in favor kindly rise. You may be seated. Is there any opposed? Hearing none, you have approved Article 16, and we will take a 10-minute recess at this point. Article 17, to see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum not to exceed $10,000 to assist in funding Brattleboro Climate Protection for Fiscal Year 2016, July 1, 2015, through June 30, 2016. The Chair recognizes Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town raise and appropriate a sum not to exceed $10,000 to assist in funding Brattleboro Climate Protection for Fiscal Year 2016, July 1, 2015, to June 30, 2016, and I would like to speak to the motion.
It has been moved, it has, let's, first of all, ask for a second. Thank you, Sherry, or thank you. Mr. Franks is going to keep me straight. It has been moved and seconded to town raise and appropriate the sum not to exceed $10,000 to assist in funding Brattleboro Climate Protection for Fiscal Year 2016, July 1, 2015, through June 30, 2016. Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. When this organization first came to being, I didn't know where I was on it. I was kind of on the fence on it, but I have to say, Paul Cameron and his group has done a fantastic job, and I would hope the body would authorize this and vote on it. I think it's the best $10,000 we could ever spend, so, thank you.
Further debate on Article 17. Mr. Montgomery.
Town meeting members, I hope got the handout that was provided with our packet on this. I'm on the Town Energy Committee, Tad Montgomery, District Two. I want to just point out the amount of savings that the town has accrued as a result of the work of Brattleboro Climate Protection in conjunction with the Energy Committee. And I'd like to encourage the Select Board to start to consider the possibility of this becoming a paid staff position. Trying to run an organization doing the amount of work that Paul leads us in doing is basically full-time work, and he has to fundraise for the vast majority of that. The responsibilities have grown and grown and grown. We've saved tens of thousands of dollars, and we've really only scratched the surface. There is huge amounts of savings that we could still be accruing with more effort than this.
Further debate on Article 17. Hearing none. All those in favor of approving Article 17, please rise. You may be seated. All those opposed, please rise. And you have approved Article 17 relating to Brattleboro Climate Protection. Article, Article 17. Article 18, to see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $120,000 to support human service programs and facilities for the residents of Brattleboro to be allocated among service providers in the following manner. AIDS Project, the Southern Vermont 2000, American Red Cross, Vermont, New Hampshire, Upper Valley Region, 4,000, Boys and Girls Club, $13,220, Brattleboro Area Adult Day Gathering Place, $2,000, Brattleboro Area Drop-In Center, $9,600, Brattleboro Area Hospice, $1,700, Brattleboro Senior Meals, $7,000, Family Garden, $2,000, Green Mountain RSVP, $700, Healthcare and Rehabilitation Services, $2,000, Kids Place, $3,500, Meeting Waters YMCA, $5,000, Morningside House, $9,000, Phoenix House Rise, $3,000, Prevent Child Abuse Vermont, $1,000, Senior Solutions, $2,800, Southeastern Vermont Community Action, Inc., $9,000, Turning Point, $6,500, Vermont Adult Learning, $700, Vermont Association for the Blind and Visually Impaired, $680, Vermont Center for Independent Living, $1,600, Visiting Nurses and Hospice of Vermont, New Hampshire, $10,000, Wyndham Child Care Association, $5,500, Wyndham County Safe Place Child Advocacy Center and Southeastern Unit for Special Investigations, $1,500, Brattleboro Town School District, Summer Lunch Program, $6,000, and Youth Services, Big Brother, Big Sisters, $10,000. The Chair recognizes Mr. Gartenstein.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $120,000 to support human services programs and facilities for the residents of Brattleboro to be allocated among service providers in the following manner. AIDS Project of Southern Vermont, $2,000, American Red Cross, Vermont, New Hampshire, Upper Valley Region, $4,000, Boys and Girls Club, $13,220, Brattleboro Area Adult Day Gathering Place, $2,000, Brattleboro Area Drop-In Center, $9,600, Brattleboro Area Hospice, $1,700, Brattleboro Senior Meals, $7,000, Family Garden, $2,000, Green Mountain RSVP, $700, HCRS, $2,000, Kids Place, $3,500, Meeting Waters YMCA, $5,000, Morningside House, $9,000, Phoenix House Rise, $3,000, Prevent Child Abuse Vermont, $1,000, Senior Solutions, $2,800, Southeastern Vermont Community Action, $9,000, Turning Point, $6,500, Vermont Adult Learning, $700, Vermont Association for the Blind and Visually Impaired, $680, Vermont Center for Independent Living, $1,600, Visiting Nurse and Hospice of Vermont, New Hampshire, $10,000, Wyndham Child Care Association, $5,500, Wyndham County Safe Place Child Advocacy Center and Southeastern Unit for Southern Special Investigations, $1,500, Brattleboro Town School District Summer Lunch Program, $6,000, Youth Services, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, $10,000. And if I could please speak to the motion. Thank you.
Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded as just stated by Mr. Gartenstein. The Chair recognizes Mr. Gartenstein.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The town is authorized to support human services throughout the community, and the process that we use was developed at Town Meeting. We did some research this past year. I don't recall the exact year, but a study group of Representative Town Meeting was established in order to address how we would deal with human services funding requests, so that rather than reviewing each one individually, we could have a more organized process. The Human Services Funding Representative Town Meeting Committee then reported back to Representative Town Meeting the next year, I think it was about 10 years ago, and suggested that a committee be formed to receive and review all human services funding requests. Town Meeting, when this report was received back from the committee, took that matter up under other business, which generally is not a time for binding action, and endorsed the committee's recommendations, and since that time, we've been following that process. So, annually, human services organizations make funding requests annually since that procedure was adopted. Those requests are received, they are forwarded to a committee that is appointed, I believe, by Select Board or Town Meeting, I don't recall. I think it's actually appointed by Town Meeting, by the, by Select Board, okay, sorry. Select Board appoints the Human Services Review Committee, and until last year, we hadn't really had significant coordination to set the amount of money that would be allocated for human services. Starting last year and also this year, we coordinated with the committee, and we settled on this amount to be allocated among the groups, and then the Human Services Committee makes the decision about what each organization will receive, and it's presented as a whole to Town Meeting, and I haven't seen it changed, although efforts have been made from time to time. Is there a representative of the Human Services Funding Committee here who can tell us about the work that was done to review these applications and to make this recommendation to Town Meeting?
Mr. Gartenstein yields to Ms. Kornizer.
Thank you, Ms. Kornizer.
Hello. We, the Human Service Committee is made up of a number of professionals coming from both service providers, past directors of large human service organizations. We met over the course of many months. We reviewed each application in depth, and what we took into consideration primarily is, were these organizations that were looking to meet the basic needs of our community? Issues of hunger, homelessness, things like that. Were these organizations serving Brattleboro citizens specifically? We know that we have many human service organizations that are in this county that have offices in Brattleboro. We wanted to make sure that they were serving Brattleboro citizens. And that we also understood that there are many organizations that are able to leverage much more funds than those given out here, and that historically, those organizations have received funds from Town Meeting, but we've started a process to slowly decrease funding to those organizations and to focus our funding on those organizations that are really dependent on Town Meeting. We've talked today about poverty in our schools and the effect of that. Recently, there was a homelessness forum and conversation that was centered at the Works in Brattleboro about the effects of homelessness and poverty on downtown businesses here. I think we would all agree that tourism is a major industry for this town, and that the face of poverty in Brattleboro is not something that we can just pass on into the next community, but is something that affects us as citizens, as, some of us as humanitarians, but also the cost of doing business here and how well we can do business. Human Service is also a major employer in this town, as the school district is, and I think that's important for us to remember when we push forward funding. A lot of these organizations need these extra funds in order to survive. We asked them to, please tell us how they're going to use the funding if we're fixing shortfalls that have come from grants disappearing, and we paid special attention this year to the loss of Vermont Yankee Funds, which was a major grant funder in this community and actually was often anonymous, or did not promote how much Vermont Yankee gave, but they did give significant money to a number of nonprofits in this town. Thank you.
Is there further debate? Ms. Turnus.
Catherine Turnus, District Three. As Chair of the Brattleboro Senior Meals Board, I would like to thank the town for giving us that money, and I'm going to take a chance to make a quick ad here. March 26, the Brattleboro Senior Meals, in conjunction with the Wyndham Orchestra, is going to have lunch at the Latches, so if you're really interested, call Brattleboro Senior Meals and talk to Chris.
Further debate? Mr. Davis.
Andrew Davis, District Three. I'm completely in favor of this article. A couple of years ago, someone brought up the issue of private fundraising for the town of Brattleboro, and it didn't go far. I know our Select Board didn't support that initiative, I think that's fair to say, but I'm wondering if there's an opening to just think about a human services fund where people can donate to this fund, and that body of money can help relieve the pressures we see on these human service grants from the town. Many of the people that these organizations serve are actually paying taxes to the town of Brattleboro via rent and via tax, and it's an opportunity perhaps for people that have money to give and want to give, not to give to the general fund, but to give to a human services fund, and that money that's given can be used for tax relief for everybody. So, if it raises- So if it raises half of this money, that money then relieves taxes. I think there's an opportunity to talk about it because there are people in this town that are eager to give above taxation for the betterment of the town of Brattleboro and to solve these problems. And I know last year, we reduced this budget because of tax considerations. And I think there's an opening here to just start thinking about a way to tap in to the goodwill of better off people in the town of Brattleboro so that the town is not pushing on that tax rate to do this good work, but to find other ways to do that good work. Thank you.
Is there further discussion or debate? Ms. Davidson.
Judy Davidson, District 3. I agree with Andy that it might be an interesting idea to pursue. I question a little bit how would that interface with the United Way Fund and, you know, just how that would work. The other question I have is a little lighter. Is there any way to make the font of this graph a little larger? The older I get, I had to use a magnifying glass to try and read that. So I just wonder, next year, could you increase the font?
Further discussion or debate? Mr. Wilberding.
First of all, Mr. Davis speaks my mind. I've proposed something similar, and I deeply respect also Mr. Chris Chapman for having proposed that the town look into ways that charitable contributions to the town's work can be received. There are many ways that they can be received at the current time. We see funds raised, for instance, for the recreation facilities. We see funds raised for all of these organizations that we support privately. Those opportunities do exist, and the more that we support our community's needs, perhaps the less over time we will have to see the charitable intent of this town become part of our debates in the municipal expense sector. My question and clarification, however, is this, and I apologize if I missed the answer to this question. On page 61, under Human Services, we see two numbers for budget fiscal year 2015, $130,765. For budget fiscal year 2016, we see $140,765 for a $10,000 difference. And I thought I heard the amount mentioned in the motion as $120,000. Could I understand if there is a discrepancy and why?
Member, Mr. Gartenstein.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The line item in the budget includes a number of additional allocations that are part of the budget process. So the 140 and change includes the $120,000 for human services organizations, $10,000 that we've allocated for climate protection, money that goes to the museum for maintenance of that building which we own. And we then give money to the Museum and Arts Center to maintain, and then a similar process for a building that is owned by the town and then used by the Crisis Center. So the $140,000 covers all of those items. In terms of the increase from last year to this year, it had been our goal in developing the budget to keep that line item level funded, but there was a misunderstanding when we were deciding how much money, when we were addressing how much money that was going to be allocated for human services funding. And we wound up giving Human Services Committee or asking them to divvy up 120 rather than 110, which was the number last year. And we didn't feel it was the right thing to do, to ask them to go back and redo all their work and bring it back in at 110 when we realized that we had made a mistake. So it's $10,000 more than last year.
Further discussion and debate? All the way in the back, sir.
Dennis Newman, District 3. I'd like to echo Catherine Turnus on the good work this does for the Brattleboro Senior Meals Program, which includes the Meals on Wheels Program. And I know that most of the recipients of the Meals on Wheels Program are below the poverty level, and they appreciate whatever help we can give them. And there are many benefits to the Meals on Wheels Program. I think it may keep people out of the hospital, provides human contact for people who live alone. And that part of the program in particular needs funding at this time. And I'd like to suggest to the Human Services Board that reviews these groups, that there may be one or two groups or maybe more, I don't know, that may not be as much in need of funds as others because they receive funding from other sources, in particular state funding. I won't name any names. That's all. Thank you.
The question is on Article 19 in support of the human services programs. Mr. Ogavi.
I wholeheartedly support spending all of the money that's being asked for. I regret that there isn't a lot more. We certainly got another good dose of reality from the school board a little while ago as they spoke of the enormous percentage of kids on school lunch programs. And never before, but this year, we hear a statistic about how many children are homeless. So we know that poverty in this town is ever deepening and that we only spend this amount of money, I find very unfortunate. I wish there was a lot more. And I certainly support the idea of developing, I think, what might have been called a community chest decades ago, a some kind. There are people in this town with money. There are people with plenty of money. In my research on the Finance Committee a few years ago, looking up the numbers in the state statistics of how many people are over $100,000 a year in income and $150,000 a year in income, and that's only the declared income, not the tax-free bond interest, et cetera. So there is money. There are Withingtons out there who can build a skating rink, and there's a Brooks who can build a library. And there are people who could give hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to the improvement of our town. And whether they will or not, I guess we can find a way to put their names on things. But it is really important, I think, to develop some kind of a mechanism by which they can.
Further debate? Mr. Mima.
Yeah, at the risk of sounding long-winded, I think on the one hand, the money that the town allocates to human services organizations is leveraged many, many times over by those organizations through their own fundraising and access to grants and also through all the volunteer hours and low-paid labor hours that they put in. So I think that the town is getting enormous value from this contribution, and I'm absolutely going to support it. At the same time, I'd just like to sort of raise a question to think about, maybe, you know, in the coming year, as next year's town meeting eventually rolls around, and that is that, and it's interesting that we have a researcher here from Lyon who's looking at how we do local governance and democracy. Because in most developed countries, there would be a significant local, you know, municipal or county human services department. In other words, more government with more public funding, doing a lot of the things that these agencies do. And we can debate whether that's more or less efficient, but I think we should debate whether that's more or less efficient. And there have been a few references to community chests, community loan funds and so forth. And a question that I would just like to put out there, knowing that we probably can't answer it here, but it's something to think about, and that is, are we doing things as efficiently as we could possibly be doing? How many of the recipients of these grants of 2,000 and 5,000 and 10,000 and so forth are duplicating their efforts? Are there opportunities for more efficiency at the administrative level or in terms of, you know, sharing facilities? Or can we assume that the proposed recipients in this article are already as efficient as they could possibly be? You know, have redundancies been eliminated to the greatest extent that they can be? And the answer may be yes. So I don't think this is something that an article would necessarily be needed for. But is there a way that the, and I would be, you know, interested in volunteering, but is there a way for the Human Services Funding Review Committee to not just look at funding requests, but to also look at this bigger question of, you know, whether or not some kind of community loan fund is needed and whether this whole social services sector, basically, in Brattleboro is working as efficiently as it can? And then the last thing I just want to throw in is, there is an article coming up, Article 20. And I'm not saying this to make any enemies here, but there's a question of whether 20,000 should be allocated to development of the skate park. And there was an acknowledgement by one of the Select Board members at the informational meeting on Monday that the skate park efforts might probably go ahead, whether or not that particular $20,000 allocation was made. The reason I bring this up is that there has been some press over the last couple of weeks about the absence of a warming shelter, a day shelter. And, you know, there might be, I don't know the procedural way of doing this, but, you know, perhaps a motion could be made at some point in the agenda today to look at whether or not to take that $20,000 that have already been earmarked and inserted in the budget.
Mr. Mima, the matter relative to the skate park is not germane at this point because that's Article 20.
I understand.
So we can only address Article 18, and we certainly can take up other issues under Other Business.
Right, okay.
But your comments are heard with regard to Article 18.
Understood.
Please limit to Article 18.
Thank you. Then that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Further discussion with regard to Article 18, the Human Services Budget. Hearing none. All those in favor of the budget as proposed by Mr. Gartenstein's motion, kindly rise. You may be seated. All those opposed, please rise. And you have unanimously adopted Article 18. Article 19, to see if the town will appropriate the sum not to exceed $375,000 from the unassigned general fund balance as of June 30, 2014, to fund in whole or in part the following capital projects. Green Street retaining wall, Elliot Street Bridge, municipal center life safety improvements, and Union Street Western Avenue intersection improvements. Chair recognizes Mrs. McCumber. Ms. McCumber.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Oh, we need a...
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I will make this motion, the end of which I will offer both a revision and an amendment, so please stay tuned. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $375,000 from the unassigned general fund balance as of June 30, 2014, to fund in whole or in part the following capital projects. Green Street retaining wall, Elliot Street Bridge, municipal center life safety improvements, and Union Street Western Avenue intersection improvements.
Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded that the town appropriate the sum of $375,000 from the unassigned general fund balance as of June 30, 2014, to fund in whole or in part the following capital projects. Green Street retaining wall, Elliot Street Bridge, municipal center life safety improvements, and Union Street Western Avenue intersection improvements. The Chair recognizes Ms. McCumber.
Thank you. I move to amend Article 19 to increase the appropriation from the unassigned general fund balance to $485,000, and will ask Mr. Gartenstein to speak to that amendment.
First, is there a second? There is, it has been moved to amend Article 19 to increase the appropriation for the undersigned, unassigned general fund balance to $485,000. And Ms. McCumber has yielded to Mr. Gartenstein.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator and Ms. McCumber. As of June 30, 2014, town of Brattleboro had an assigned fund balance just over $2,500,500. $375,000 of that money had to be spent for an insurance payment. And we have a policy that was adopted about three years ago, which calls upon the town to maintain an unassigned fund balance savings account in the amount of about 10% of our operating budget. Now, that amount is what's recommended from municipalities of our side by financial professionals, and it's been endorsed by our Finance Director, and it was suggested by the Finance Committee that we maintain balance in a certain amount. And that fund came in very useful, among other things. When we faced unanticipated disasters, we had cash in the bank in order to be able to respond to the devastation caused by Tropical Storm Irene. Surrounding towns didn't have that money in the bank and were not able to move quickly to make very necessary repairs. But this is the reason we keep these sort of funds in the bank. Same thing, I think it was September 11 of 2013, we got like five inches of rain in about an hour and a half, and it washed out the Elm Street Bridge and did other significant damage around town. And we had cash in the bank to be able to make repairs immediately. And we try to keep 10% as a goal in the bank for these emergencies. So the difference between the amount of money that we have in the unassigned fund balance and what we need totals, at this point, using 10% as a guideline, about $570,000, $580,000 after expenses that are already committed off of that money. And I'll ask the town manager, when I finish my remarks, to explain his recommendation and his approach to use of fund balance. Because over the years since I've been attending town meeting, I think the first one I got elected to was 1985, our approach to using unassigned fund balance has changed consistently. And sometimes there's been pressure to use a lot of that money in order to lower the tax rate. And then in other years, we don't have as much money and we've got other expenses, and what to do with the fund balance becomes a question. What we've decided to do and to recommend is to spend the money above the 10% threshold on unanticipated capital projects. There's a lot, a lot of big-ticket capital projects that the town is facing. We got to fix the Green Street retaining wall. That wall is falling down. There's a hole in the Elliot Street Bridge deck. There's an outflow pipe off of Harris Place that runs under the railroad tracks. That's got to be fixed before it undermines the integrity of the railroad tracks. There's a retaining wall on Bonnyvale Road, right where it meets Western Avenue. That's got to be fixed. The municipal center has got life safety fire code violations that require about $450,000 to repair. And let's not forget, we haven't been moving forward in the last six or 10 months with repairs to the police and fire facilities for which bonding authority and the amount of $14 million for repair was given by this body in October 2012. So we have a lot of capital needs. So, we have a lot of capital needs. And many of those capital needs come up, and they're unanticipated. And the town manager's position is that we should be spending the unassigned fund balance on those capital needs, those unanticipated capital needs. And so, $485,000 is the amount that we're asking for to do that, which is most of the amount that's above the 10% threshold that we've decided to keep in the bank. Now, of the unassigned fund balance, you'll hear later, we are recommending use of $95,000 to lower taxes. That's part of the general budget motion that I'll be speaking to, I expect, after lunch. But at this point, the $485,000 is the amount over the 10%, less what we want to use to defray taxes. The reason it's different from the 375 that's in the report, the town meeting report, is we recognized that there was $200,000 extra in the unassigned fund balance that we had decided last year to use to lower taxes. And we, it actually is in the designated fund, John, what is it called? In the committed fund, as reviewed by the auditors. But when we were doing our finalization of the budget that made its way into the town report, we thought it was in the unassigned fund balance. So, that's why we've amended from 375 to 485 for the purposes of this motion. And I would, Mr. Moderator, if it's acceptable, yield to the town manager just to speak about his position about a responsible manner for using unassigned fund balance, which is what the board is committed to doing in the future.
Mr. Gartenstein yields to Mr. Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator and Mr. Gartenstein. You've heard an accurate summary of the recommendation that I made to the Select Board, and as a result of which, and after some discussion they are making to you. I think that it's especially important right now, given the magnitude of the unplanned and unbudgeted capital needs of the town, urgent capital needs of the town, particularly, you know, Exhibit A is the Green Street retaining wall, Exhibit B, the Elliott Street Bridge, we have others on the list here, because it gives some flexibility for the board to be able to make decisions going forward about which projects are ready first and need the funding based on grant funds that may be made available for one or another of these projects. So, that flexibility helps. But these four projects represent the type of expenditure for which we should invest the savings account. You heard earlier during the school district's portion of the meeting, reference to the metaphor of any one of us sitting around at kitchen table with our family, making these kinds of decisions about what we spend on from the savings account. For the town's funds, particularly now, and for the foreseeable future, as we catch up on infrastructure needs, it'll be very important that we reserve for these one-time expenses reinvestment of unassigned fund balance into capital and other one-time costs, so that we avoid relying on surplus funds from unassigned fund balance in the operations, basic daily operations and recurring expenses of town government, which not only then drains resources from being able to be spent on the capital needs that have been deferred and must be addressed, but also puts the town in a precarious position where, at some future fiscal year, when we don't have a surplus, either services would need to be significantly cut, or taxes would have to be significantly raised, just in order to maintain the status quo. So, for both of those reasons, in order to properly invest in our infrastructure and in order to make more sustainable the year-to-year budgeting of the town's operations, we strongly recommend to town meeting that you approve this article and reserve the use of unassigned fund balance for one-time expenses.
The question is on the motion to amend to increase the sum or appropriation from the unassigned general fund balance to $485,000. Mr. Rounds.
Paul Rounds, now District 2. I just have a question. By stating that you're going to use it for Green Street, Elliott Street, Western Avenue, and the municipal center, are we tying your hands to only allowing you to use it there in case something else arose? So, would we be better off just giving you the $485,000 to use it? Your best judgment to do these capital improvements that we need done versus stating exactly what they're going to be used for, and then you having to maneuver the money that way?
Well, I can respond to that, and I think Mr. Elwell can as well. We can only act on the actual warning, as it is written. And in this particular case, there are four specified projects for which these funds have been directed. And we are not in a position, it's not germane, for us to be able to add in another or two or three other projects. But I'll let Mr. Elwell speak to this issue from a substantive standpoint.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. There are, these four projects represent financial need that is far greater than the $485,000. So, your point's well taken in terms of how we might want to structure a similar request for a future warning to make maximum flexibility available to the town, to the body. But for this year, we won't be able to spend from these funds, if you authorize them in a moment, all the money necessary in order to complete the four improvements. Now, I will say, since we're talking about the particular improvements, we've found a more creative way to address the Union Street/Western Avenue intersection. We're going to do that with Town Forces at a significantly reduced cost of completing that project. So, that'll happen shortly and won't be funded through the use of these funds. But the other three needs are significant, and we will most likely be using either for a portion of two of the three, or for a portion of all three, these $485,000 if you do authorize them.
Further discussion. Ms. Melton.
Just looking for clarity about whether we're discussing the amendment or the article.
We are discussing the amendment, and that's well taken, Ms. Melton. However, the amendment relates to a sum of money that will be applied to four projects, so they sort of cross over. But it is the amendment. The question is on increasing the sum to $485,000. Is there further debate? Ms. Erfer.
Hello, Kathy Erfer, District 3. I was just wanting some information, or reconciliation, I guess, between the information in the capital improvement plan? Because it seems like some of the things that are listed, like the Green Street retaining wall, are listed in the capital improvement plan, but there are certainly more projects in the capital improvement plan than are identified in this article. So, just trying to understand how these particular projects would be chosen for the unassigned fund balance, as opposed to all of the other capital improvement projects.
Mr. Gartenstein is interrogated.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I believe that if you look in the FY '16 column of the capital improvement plan, which runs from page 72 through 75 of the town report, none of these items actually are included There has been planning for some of these items reflected in other years in anticipation that work might be needed. But the capital items for this year in FY '16 don't include any of the items that are included in this Article 19.
Further discussion or debate? Mr. Ghul.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Eli Ghul, District 1. I just have a quick question about this, not exactly related to my role on police-fire, but it does strike me, I want to vote for this, I want to authorize our town managers to be able to use this well when they need to. We're talking about three of one thing and one of something else here. And I think we want to make sure that we separate out when a bridge washes out, when we have ongoing life safety problems in facilities that we own, that we need to make, we need to take a square, we as a body and as a government need to take a square stance at and solve those comprehensively, not as part of a, the same fund that helps us when we wash out bridges. So, I, and I think that we're, we want to make sure that we take that stance, take it this year, start allocating funds for that kind of thing proactively, and not when we do planning and then realize later on that there are already existing life safety problems. So, I actually think this is slightly different. I want to still support this, but I would be curious as to how we should be treating life safety problems at facilities that we own going forward.
Mr. Elwell, do you care to respond to Mr. Ghul's question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ms. Ghul and everyone, I think that that point is very well taken, but at the moment where we are, we have these needs that are not otherwise funded and must be addressed. And so, that's why we're making the recommendation that is represented here in Article 19. Going forward, those of you who are at the informational meeting heard me describe the other night, an effort that staff has begun, that we're going to be working together with the board, and we welcome engagement from the community on throughout the upcoming next six months or so, where we're going to be comprehensively reviewing every aspect of the town's budget and the town's operations. And we do need, not only related to the maintenance and operating costs and proper sizing of our facilities, but related to the infrastructure as well, and related to all aspects of our operations, we need to be satisfying ourselves that things are properly calibrated and planned for, and where we can't satisfy ourselves of that, we need to recalibrate. So, there are some areas, not just, as you mentioned, about making sure that we're properly maintaining our facilities in a safe and legal manner, but other ways as well, in which I expect that as we complete this comprehensive review and then work together to create a long-term financial plan and move forward with that plan, that we will be planning and setting aside funds for a variety of different needs that otherwise would have to be addressed just as they emerge.
Is there further debate? Mr. Wilmerding.
John Wilmerding, Second District. I just want to offer a little bit of institutional memory regarding the Finance Committee's consideration of unassigned fund balance. It's about two years ago that the committee forwarded to the Select Board a recommendation that we have a town policy, that the unassigned fund balance not be allowed to fall below 10% for the reasons that Mr. Elwell has very capably described. And I'm very, very happy that we have an executive branch, namely our Select Board and our town management, which are able to make decisions on their feet and on the fly and help us with these emergency situations when they emerge, with the flexibility to do that, as we did in Hurricane Irene. So, I believe what we're being asked to do here is support the notion that we do have a policy to that effect. I think that when we had the dialogue with the Select Board two years ago, the Select Board returned a response, saying, "Well, we're in agreement with that as a guideline." And the term "policy" and the term "guideline" are different. So, I think that maybe there's some continuum of strength in there between guideline and policy, and maybe we fall somewhere in between those. But I continue to believe strongly that we should have an unassigned fund balance reserve at 10%.
The question is on the motion to amend to increase the appropriation from the unassigned general fund balance to $485,000. Are there further questions or comments? Mr. Siegel.
I'm Siegel, District 3. Parts of this have been answered in response to other people's questions, but I just wanted to clarify, and as I see it, I don't really see these as unanticipated capital expenses. They were, by and large, very easy to anticipate, and there will always be similar expenses as probably needing to be taken care of on more of a continuing rotation of dealing with the infrastructure of the town. These could easily have been told, we could have anticipated two or three years ago. The problem I see with using this money this way is that we're never going to get out from under if we do this. I think I'm willing to enthusiastically support Mr. Elwell's effort over the next year to come up with a plan forward with far sighted, and so I'm willing to vote for this, but I wouldn't be next year. Thank you.
Further debate? Mr. Davis.
Andrew Davis, District 3. This is several projects. Is there an estimate of the total cost of these projects in relation to what we are taking from the unassigned fund to contribute toward them? And does adding $110,000 affect, how does that affect grants? I mean, the difference between the total cost of the work and what we're being asked to approve today is probably a pretty big number, too. What is that number, and how are you going to spend, find that funds? And does adding $110,000, how does that interact with our request for grants, et cetera?
A member of the administration is interrogated. Mr. Gartenstein.
I'm going to begin the response, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Elwell to follow up. The amount of money that these projects will cost is not what's driving the $485,000 request. The $485,000 is the excess over the 10% threshold in the unassigned fund balance. We are seeking grant money for many of these projects, and to the extent that the money, if it's authorized today from the unassigned fund balance, plus the grant money, is not sufficient, we're going to have to come up with money from other sources to complete these projects. And then, Ms. Elwell, I'll ask you to speak.
The Green Street retaining wall, we hope to be able to complete with only approximately $100,000 of additional town funds for a total cost of improvement that's going to be close to $600,000, because there are substantial, two different grant programs, one of which would provide a $300,000 grant to the town for that project if we do succeed in obtaining that. That will make it possible, then, to move forward more aggressively with either or both, combination of the two, the remaining projects, the life safety improvements at the municipal center and the Elliott Street Bridge, depending on how much of the funds remain available and what other sources of funds may be able to be obtained for those projects. So, there's a lot of uncertainty here, the point that was made earlier about maintaining maximum flexibility in accordance with the principle that we only invest these kinds of funds in infrastructure or other one-time needs, I think is well taken for a future year. But with the wording of this article the way it is, the assurance we can give you is, we're doing everything we can to find other people's money that will help pay for these, but there will be $485,000 and almost certainly more than that, that we will need of Brattleboro money in order to make them happen.
Is there further debate with regard to the motion to amend? If not, let me explain what we're going to do. We're going to first vote on the motion to amend, which will be to increase the appropriation of the unassigned general fund balance to 485. And then we will have the second motion, based upon your decision there, which will be on the principal motion, the main motion. So, having So, having said that, all those in favor of amending Article 19 to increase the appropriation from the unassigned general fund balance to $485,000, please rise. You may be seated. All those opposed, please rise, and you have amended Article 19. Now, we return to the main motion as amended. I move that, it has moved that the town appropriate the sum of $485,000 from the unassigned general fund balance as of June 30, 2014, to fund in whole or in part the following capital projects: Green Street retaining wall, Elliott Street Bridge, Municipal Center life safety improvements, and Union Street/Western Avenue intersection improvements. Are you ready for that question? If so, all those in favor, please rise. You may be seated. All those opposed, please rise, and you have approved Article 19 as amended. Article 20, to see if the town will appropriate $20,000 from the unassigned general fund balance to assist with investigating feasibility and assist in development of a skate park at Living Memorial Park. Chair recognizes Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town appropriate $20,000 from the unassigned general fund balance to assist with investigating feasibility and assist in development of a skate park at Living Memorial Park, and I would like to speak.
Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded to appropriate $20,000 from the unassigned general fund balance to assist with investigating feasibility and assist in development of a skate park at Living Memorial Park. Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I will keep this short. I have been a supporter of the skate park for many, many years, and I would really love this body to support this. It's a long time coming. The $20,000 will move them forward, and I really believe that this is necessary at this point, so I'm hoping that the body approves this. Thank you.
Is there debate with regard to Article 20? Mr. Sage.
Rusty Sage, District One. In regards to Article 20, I see a number of issues that come up in mind. The first one being, moments ago, we just listened to Mr. Gardenstein talk about the unassigned general fund and how its use has been to offset town costs and emergencies. I haven't skateboarded in probably 30 years, but even then, I don't think I would have considered a skateboard park an emergency. So, I question using that money from the unassigned general fund towards this project. The second question I'd like to bring up is, right now, we've got an infrastructure in Brattleboro that is falling apart. We just voted $485,000 under Article 19 to repair bridges, roads, retaining walls, life safety stuff, and now we're going to bring forth to the body, putting $20,000 of our tax money towards a skate park, which, that's not going to be the end of the money that we put towards this. There's going to be upkeep costs, maintenance, it's not going to be the end of the money that we put towards this park. The other question I'd like to bring up is, and maybe you can speak towards this, what's going to be the liability, the oversight of the park? Who's going to provide security, safety when people are there? These are all other things that could be foreseen expenses that I, it's not going to stop at $20,000. We're just going to give $20,000 to a group to pretty much do what they want within the future.
Further debate on Article 20? Question is, shall the town appropriate $20,000 from the unassigned general fund balance to assist with investigating feasibility and assist in development of a skate park at Living Memorial Park? Are you ready for that question? Mr. Wilmerting.
I've generally supported the plans for a skate park, even when it was slated to be built across the street from my house. But we were told in the past that if we build a skate park, it's going to be built with funds raised outside of the tax base. I'm interested in knowing how much money has been raised to build a skate park, and what is the current balance, and what amount of pledges are in place to build it, and why we now are turning to the Treasury to do this. One more thing. We have invested a lot of money actually in this already without it being budgeted, because staff and volunteers have expended extraordinary amounts of time on all sides and issues of this question. I am very impatient to see a skate park, so I hope that can happen.
Further questions, debates, or responses? Gentlemen, all the way in the back. No, yes. Jeff.
Hi, I'm Jed Leslie, District One. I would just like to say I'm super in support of the skate park, but I question Living Memorial Park. I know that's not really a question up for debate right now. But, comment being said, the, I feel that everyone knows that skating is an urban activity, and you're not going to really move skating out of downtown, I would think, and all that traffic and safety concern that people have for the wax on the sidewalks and all that type of stuff, for people to go and walk or take a bus to Living Memorial Park. So, it would be nice if we could still consider downtown as an option, and I know voting this...
That's not, that would not necessarily be germane to the question. This is not a general question as to whether we would do or don't want a skate park. The question is, should the town appropriate $20,000 toward its effort? So, if we could keep our inquiry to just what is germane to the question.
Sure. So, the question is, if we vote no for this, does that effectively kill the park where it stands?
I don't know the answer to that question. So, Mr. Gardenstein intends to get, collect the questions and answer them all at once. Mr. Underhill.
Put this on your list, David. Ben Underhill, District One. Am I correct in saying that there was an expenditure by the skate park committee for a feasibility study for the Crow lot area? And is this almost a, you know, quid pro quo for that?
All right. Further discussions or questions? Ms. Davison?
Judy Davidson, District Three. I am in favor of the skate park and have donated money to it already, and I'll donate money again, and I really like the idea of the dog exercise area being connected to it. I question, though, whether we should be taking money out of the unassigned fund to provide this. I understand it was a goodwill gesture, because the skate park committee has gone through hell trying to find an appropriate location, and I'm totally sympathetic to that, but I just wonder, you know, is this appropriate, given that we have told the voters that the money will be raised privately, and there will be some further expense, I think, to the town in terms of maintenance? So, I appreciate the goodwill intent, but I just question whether this is the right way to spend our money, taxpayers.
Ms. Melton.
Paula Melton, District One. I should always come right after you. The microphone's in my place. I have never understood why skateboarding is segregated out of our recreation and parks' budget. We have skiing, we have ice skating, hockey, baseball fields, we have all sorts of facilities for people to do all kinds of sports, and somehow, because of, I don't know why, we have decided that somehow skateboarding is separate. I don't agree with that. I don't think it's appropriate that we make this group raise money, special money for their park, and I think this is the least we can do to give public funds to something that I believe is a public good.
Further questions or debate? Mr. Gardenstein.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's been a lengthy process to try to get a skate park developed in town, and I'll try to respond to all the questions that I've heard very briefly. In terms of location of the facility, it's been an ongoing process from the first effort to site it at West River Park, and that lengthy process has resulted in the most recent plan for it to be at Living Memorial Park on the upper level. In terms of how much money has been raised thus far, my understanding is that there's $28,000 in grant funds and donations that's been raised, that's being held in the committed funds for, that's the current balance in the committed fund. We have been making efforts not to expend town money other than administrative costs for supporting the project, like many others, and in fact, most new development of recreational facilities has been through private donation. So, the West River Park, for example, was built exclusively through private donations, although obviously there's administrative costs, because Parks and Rec participates in those efforts. We've addressed liability issues recently with respect to the potential skate park being up in Living Memorial Park at a recent Select Board meeting, after communicating with VLCT, Vermont League of Cities and Downs, about what precautions need to be taken to protect those who'd be using the park and other facilities. I guess the only other thing I would say is that the $20,000 out of the surplus for this purpose came before, the suggestion to do that came well before the new town manager came on board, before we started considering trying to restrict the use of the surplus for that purpose, and the $20,000 out of that million and six is not really a material sum, so, in fact, if you're voting in favor of this $20,000, it's a show of support and goodwill to helping the development of the skate park, which, as Ms. Davidson indicates, they've been through a lot of pain and effort and have very little to show for at this point, except for another potential location.
The question is, shall the town appropriate $20,000 from the unassigned general fund balance to assist with investigating feasibility and assist in development of a skate park at Living Memorial Park? Is there further debate? Yes.
Elizabeth McLaughlin, District Three. I'm also the newest member of the skate park committee, so I've been welcomed to hell. I just want to say that the skate park committee would definitely appreciate and need this funding, and allow the skate park committee to begin its new fundraising at this new location in earnest, and we would have, therefore, a concept to take to potential funders and to fundraise with a design in mind. And so, it's really helpful to this committee, after all the years and years of planning, to have this base funding to go forward to raise the approximately $200,000 that's needed to build the park. Thank you.
Further discussion or debate? Ms. Barboulis.
Dora Boobalas, District Three. I'm not a big fan of using the unassigned fund balance for these kind of expenditures. If it hadn't been said already multiple times during the last article, I would have gotten up and said something. The Select Board's already heard my opinions on those being not in the regular capital plan. But I do think that we have used the unassigned fund balance for these kind of expenditures over the years, and until we have an absolute policy in place, in which we're going to apply it fairly across the board, that it, we need to do this, because we've done it for so many other things, particularly recreational needs, and there's, it's been a long journey with the skate park and finding a location. Not everybody's totally happy about this location, they're not going to be totally happy about any location, but it's sort of come into agreement, and they need to put some money into it, and it is a town-owned park, it's a recreational need, and $20,000 isn't a huge amount of money.
The question is, shall the town appropriate $20,000 from the unassigned general fund balance to assist with investigating feasibility and assist in the development of the skate park in Living Memorial Park? Are you ready for that question? Yes, sir.
Christian Stromberg, District One. Point of a clarification, that the skiing is not part of the Recs Department at this point. I'm involved with it, and I'm really a big supporter of having a skate park in town. What I'm hoping is, if this is going to become, when the skate park's built, if it is part of Recs and Oversight, that of course someday we'll discuss, you know, more money back to skiing, which is currently there and utilized and in need to repay a really nice snow groomer. Thank you.
Mr. Gould.
So, yeah, Mr. Moderator, Eli Gould, District One. I just had a follow-up question in regards to this, this article. If there are those who do, who do agree that they want to support the skate park, but have, you know, and want to make right for, for a process which has been costly for them, then is this being too specific if we limit it to Memorial Park? And if the finding becomes quickly that they still need to keep looking, or they're, or should we, should we actually be making an amendment to do a one-time, do a one-time support of their next step feasibility, but not limit that to the park?
Is there anyone who cares to respond to Mr. Gould's question? Is there further debate? Or, oh, yes, Mr. Wilmerting.
Having watched the issue over the years, I would say that voting in favor of this motion will, in effect, decide for the town that we will build a skate park at Living Memorial Park, which I favor.
Is there further debate? Mr. Dimes.
Kurt Dimes, District Two. I think Mr. Sage's original point about the appropriateness of this expenditure is the crucial one. This is simply, no matter how you feel about the project, this is not the proper way to pay, and we should consider, for comparison, other items on our budget which are mentioned to have received less than $20,000. The family garden, the Green Mountain RSVP, health care and rehabilitation services and so forth, there's nothing in our human services which receives more than $20,000, and there are people in this room who earn less than $20,000 a year. So, I think it is inappropriate to refer to the $20,000 amount as insignificant.
Mr. Fallon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Peter Fallon, District Three. My question is, and the question I have is...
My question is, and the question I have is, as part of this feasibility, does the skate park committee, have they gotten approval from Act 250? Are there real possibilities that we go ahead and support this and it comes back, no, I'm sorry, you can't even think about building it, Living Memorial Park? Or has that -- have those conversations with state and others been already taking place? Could someone answer? Thank you.
The chair recognizes Mr. Alwell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The process is not complete, but the prospects are good at the Upper Memorial Park site.
Further debate? Mr. Siegel.
I'm Siegel, District Three. I just wanted -- I wanted to support Mr. Gould's suggestion that we make this a broader option, given the amorphous quality of trying to get this skate park cited. And I don't know, is there a procedure that we're -- through which we can do that easily?
Yes. You could move to amend by deleting the words "at Living Memorial Park" so that it would read $20,000 from the unassigned general fund balance to assist with investigating feasibility and assist in the development of a skate park, and delete that remaining part. I don't know that that is what the select board had intended, but you're asking me a question, and I'm telling you as the moderator that you have the right to move to amend.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody on the select board that has a concern with that change? I didn't catch that. So I'd like to make that amendment, as you stated it.
Is there, first of all, Mr. Siegel has made the motion to amend by eliminating the words "at" at Living Memorial Park. And the first thing I have to ask is, is there a second to the motion? Okay. Mr. Allen, would you care to be heard on this?
Well, I would just like to ask maybe the head of the -- or the committee to answer that question, to see if they have a feeling one way or the other. Whoever.
Is there someone who can speak on behalf of the committee? Ms. McLaughlin.
I guess that's me. As far as I know, we're set. I mean, we've looked at, God, every site in town, and this is the one that everyone has seemed to agree with. So let's begin at this site, because there aren't any impediments that anyone is aware of. The Act 250, it's, you know, it's not near the Brook, and it's not near any of those other things. So I should think that we would be very grateful to the town to go ahead as the amendment was originally made and not alter it in any way, so we could just go. Thank you.
The question is, on the motion to amend, to remove from the motion the words "at Living Memorial Park," is there further debate? Hearing none? Although, oh, I'm sorry. Please, yes.
Joe Bushy, District Two. I'm also on the Basic Committee, and I was also on the Site Selection Committee. I'd have to agree with Liz McLaughlin in that we don't see any further impediments to that location at Living Memorial Park. We've been through quite a few sites to get to this point. But myself, my personal two cents worth is, if in any way, shape, or form, having that "at Living Memorial Park" in there restricts us at all whatsoever, you know, we're, as I see it worded, we're checking the feasibility of that, I'd hate to have there be any limitation on us moving forward if having that language in there does so. So if adhering to that amendment and striking it puts less restriction on us to just keep moving forward towards a skate park. Ideally, we think it's going to be at Living Memorial Park. At this point, really, I wouldn't want to stake all my worth on that's going to be the final destination. That just merely feels the direction the cannon is pointed in right now. But I would really like to see it come somewhere. But if having that "at Living Memorial Park" restricts us at all from going anywhere towards spending that $20,000, if you do in fact award it to Basic, I would be in favor of striking that, or adhering to the amendment. So, thank you.
The question is, on the Siegel amendment to strike the words "at Living Memorial Park," are you ready for that question? One more. Do you want to speak?
Sure.
Oh, okay. Mr. Allen.
Well, seeing as I made the motion, I'm more than happy to amend it. So if that moves it along and gets it going, I'm happy to strike that.
You're happy to support it? The motion to amend's already on the table?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm happy to support it.
Mr. Wilmerding.
John Wilberding, Second District. I don't think this amendment is necessary to preserve the flexibility of the work of the skate park committee and the executive branch of our government, the select board. I think they remain in, with much flexibility in their hands. But I see the original motion as a movement to build a skate park, and I support it as originally worded.
Further discussion on the amendment? The amendment being to strike the words "at Living Memorial Park." Mr. Webster.
Don Webster, District Three. I agree with John. I read this amendment. If you have a feasibility study and you go through that feasibility study and you find real problems there, well, then the feasibility study has done its job. What I see the amendment doing is taking our eye off the goal and the project involved. Is this a good project for our town? I don't think there's a cavity in my brain that hasn't been assaulted by arguments one side or the other about any of these locations. I don't think there's any more knowledge needed in this room to move ahead with this project. So I would encourage this body to reject the amendment and proceed as stated in the morning.
Further debate on the amendment? The question is, shall you amend the article by striking the words "at Living Memorial Park"? All those -- Mr. Dimes. No, you don't. I'm presenting the question right now. The question is, shall you amend the article by striking the words "at Living Memorial Park"? All those in favor of striking those words, please rise. You may be seated. All those opposed to striking those words, please rise. And the chair is in doubt, and we will have a division. All those in favor of striking the words "at Living Memorial Park," please rise and remain standing until you have been counted. You may be seated. All those opposed to striking the words "at Living Memorial Park," please rise and remain standing until counted. Listen to the results of your vote. 66 in favor of striking the words "at Living Memorial Park," 55 voting no, and you have voted to amend the article. The article now reads, "Shall the town appropriate $20,000 from the unassigned general fund balance to assist with investigating feasibility and assisting in development of a skate park?" Are you ready for that vote? If so, Mr. Chapman.
Hi, I'm Chris Chapman. I'm in District One. I'd like to point out that we've made some huge decisions already financially. We're being hung up on a $20,000 item, but one that I think is appropriately hung up because what we are doing essentially is making an investment in the town. We're voting whether or not to make an investment. It's not a capital project. It is an investment, however, in our town and in our children. And I believe that an issue like this really does hold this town up to a mirror so that it can see itself. And I think that we want to see our good side. Yes, it's $20,000. $20,000 is not insignificant, small by comparison, but is by no means insignificant. I agree with everyone who has pointed that out. But I do believe that it is in the town's best interest, and specifically in the children's best interests, to vote on this. I would point out that there is a pent-up demand for it. Speaking as a former member of the Boys and Girls Club Board, I'm familiar with the fact that the indoor skating rink that is there is very popular, heavily used. Kids have to go inside to use a skate park. We already are all, as adults, a little annoyed when we see people on the sidewalks. It's a fun, it's a wonderful sport, and in fact, I hope that one of these kids will teach me how to skateboard once it's in. And I think that we, it's in our, it's in our 12,000-member society here in Brattleboro to move ahead with this, even if it, the $20,000 seems to be symbolic, but it is for a specific and a very important purpose, part of a very structured, very practical approach to doing a project like this. And I think it would be great if we were to vote on this and then go to lunch.
The question is on the motion as amended. Mr. Reed Savery.
George Reed Savery, District One, District Two, I'm sorry. I just, we often have conversations on how much time we spend focusing on the town budget as the school budget. I'd just like to point out that at this high school budget a couple, three years ago, with about five minutes' conversation, the town voted for a $500,000, $600,000 running track. And here, we spent considerably longer on $20,000. And I just think we should go ahead and approve it and reap the benefits from it. Thank you.
Question is, shall the town appropriate $20,000 from the general, unassigned general fund balance to assist with investigating feasibility and assist in development of a skate park? Are you ready for that question? If so, all those in favor, please rise. You may be seated. All those opposed, please rise. You may be seated, and the article has been adopted. And as Mr. Chapman has just urged me to do, we will call a recess. One hour, let's all plan on being back to start with Article 21 at quarter of -- my gosh, it's going to be quarter of two now. So try to be here on time, if you can, so, because we've still got work to do.